Okay, ready? All right, so we'll call it an order, the regular business meeting for the Board of Education, Community High School District 128 for Monday, February 22nd, 2021. If I could ask everybody to please recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
All right, so before we begin, let me just, I want to assign a secretary. Roll call first. All right, roll call.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Groody.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
She's absent. Karen's not here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, so we know Karen Lundstedt is absent for the record, so in her absence, I need to make a pro tem. Casey, you're up, thank you. All right, our agenda this evening, I believe we have nine letters to read into the record, and I don't believe there's anybody here in person, correct? Okay. Brief President's Report, which will include updates from our student school board reps, and then I have one other item to address briefly. Superintendent will approve the consent. Superintendent's Report has a number of issues, including comments related to our hybrid programs, as well as health and safety and other COVID-related items. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed two weeks ago in committee. Have brief updates from program and personnel and facilities and finance. Anything from ISB, Jen?
No, not
Nothing from ISB, and nothing from SEDOL, and that should do it. Okay. All right, turn over to you.
Before we begin this evening, it is with great sadness that we share the news of the passing of our counselor, coach, and friend, Scott Bogamill. Scott was a significant figure at Libertyville High School for students, parents, community members, and his colleagues. Scott joined LHS 17 years ago, and during his entire career at LHS, he served with distinction in his role as school counselor in the G through P learning support team, specifically the G through K A N alpha slice. Although the lion's share of his work was supporting students and their families, Scott also played a pivotal role for student athletes as boys' basketball head coach for over a decade at LHS. His ability to connect with students, be it on the court, in his office, during a home visit, before or after school, was well-known by his students and their parents. He was highly respected by his LST colleagues and by the staff at large. Scott joined LHS after a very successful career at Gordon Tech High School, now DePaul College Prep, where he served students as a counselor and head basketball coach. While at Gordon Tech, Scott was recognized as IBCA Coach of the Year. In addition, Scott was a distinguished member of the Five Star Basketball Camp family, which brought Scott in contact with top Division One coaches and players throughout the nation. Several of those players would go on to successful careers in the NBA. Scott passed away suddenly and unexpectedly on Saturday, February 13th. His sudden loss has left his LHS family in disbelief. This is a tremendous loss to our school community because of Scott's positive nature, friendships, and impact, which are the very attributes for which he will be long remembered. LHS sends its deepest sympathy to friends outside of school and to those students, parents, athletes, and community members touched by his care, guidance, mentoring, friendship. Scott will be deeply, deeply missed, and I would ask us all to have a brief moment of silence in Scott's memory. Thank you. Pat?
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll open up for public comment.
Our first letter is from Sue Sarah. My daughters are really enjoying the hybrid learning and being back in the building. From what I am hearing, it is going really well. I'm wondering if you might share your plan and metrics on how and when we will move into the next phase of in-person learning. I'm not sure if you are aware, but there are, I'm sorry, there is a rather large culture of laziness and ability to cheat that has evolved with our high school students this past year. No one will ever admit it, and they will continue to say that they want to stay home to be safe, but I know that their ability to cheat from home is quite easy and being done on a regular basis. I also know that there is a certain level of laziness our kids have acquired. It's easier to stay home, less effort. This is a sad situation for this generation of high school students. I think that we and thousands of schools across the world have proven that learning can and should be done 100% in person, so I am hopeful that you all do, in fact, have a plan in place. When does the district make the choice to move to remove the choice to stay home and for students and teachers to be in the building? I'm also wondering if VHHHS could move the plan, move to the plan that GBN did. We only have about 30% of kids who want hybrid. Can all those students just be in the building full-time? They should be able to go all day, every day. My daughters have two to eight kids in the classroom at a time. There's more than enough space to include all kids. Thank you for all that you've done thus far to get the kids back into school. It is very much appreciated. Now let's talk about what is next.
Mary Taduric Communications.
The next message is from Julie Brown. I would like to know what plans are currently being discussed to get our kids back in person this school year and next fall. Every time you turn on the news or read a paper, there is another article about the detrimental effects remote learning is having on kids socially, emotionally, and with respect to their education. Thank you. This message is from Laura Warren. Hi, as a parent of a sophomore at Vernon Hills High School, I want to better understand what are the benchmarks required to have students return to school full-time? With more and more teachers getting vaccinated, will there be a point this current school year that the schools mandate students return to school unless they have a health condition? I've heard from many students and parents who tried hybrid, and their students didn't want to continue to go if only a few kids were in their classes. Many other schools in other states have students going back successfully. At what point or benchmark will you ask our students to return without it being a choice? Thank you. Excuse me. The next message is from Garrett Self. D-128 Board of Education, I am writing today to ask two basic questions. One, under what quantifiable circumstances will we reopen our schools for five days per week instruction for our students and insist all students and staff without a medically justifiable reason to not attend in-person do so? And two, what verifiable publicly available sources will the data be sourced from? Per the Lake County Health Department website, new COVID cases are at levels that closely match the lowest new caseload tracker since data was collected. As of 2018, the incidence rate was 7.39 per 100K cases. That means in Vernon Hills, on average, there are less than two cases on a seven-day rolling average. Two, with caseloads down, vaccinations rolling out, and proven success in full hybrid models in other districts, along with the mountain of research showing schools to not be a spreader of the virus, there cannot be continued justification for not returning to class ASAP. Students have been in a hybrid mode for several weeks without incident. My student participated in hybrid for three weeks but has chosen not to return due to the shockingly low participation rate at VHHHS and the poor experience resulting from the current setup. IHSA athletics have been permitted to return across all risk levels, including parents now able to attend at D-128 facilities. Thank you. Are we saying it's okay for 10 students at a time from across Lake and Cook County to co-mingle in close quarters for an hour at a time on a basketball floor? It is, by the way, but not sit a few feet apart from their classmates for an hour at a time to learn. This is illogical. At this stage of the year, the Board of Education owes the community answers, not continued unhelpful responses to continuing to consult with state and local authorities. We are quickly nearing the one-year anniversary of the shutting of our schools. That alone should be a wake-up call for action done in a safe, healthy, and creative way for our kids. Enough is beyond enough. The next message is from Denny Norwood. Greetings, District 128. I am writing in support of a full reopening of LHS for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. The evidence continues to stack up and prove that schools are not significant sources of transmission and that student-to-teacher transmission is even more rare. Given the vast array of mitigation strategies D-128 has implemented and the priority access to vaccines that the staff has been granted, it is now time to give our students a choice to return to the classroom full-time. Our students are not learning, excuse me, to the standards of D-128. Cheating is rampant. Study skills consistent of Google searches, questions to Alexa, and sharing answers with other students. We need our students back in the classroom now so they can begin the transition to the demands that an in-person learning will have. Doing this now will allow for the 2021-2022 school year to start strong. I also ask for greater transparency on the district's plan to transition to full in-person learning. So far, we only have a verbal statement that the plan is for normal reopening in the fall. Well, I have far more than three minutes of questions about this. I have so many questions because there has been no transparency into how these decisions are being made. Excuse me. Please put the needs of our students first and allow them back into the classroom full-time. Sorry. The next letter is from Lisa Hannigan. District 128 Board and Administrators, I applaud your efforts to bring kids back to school part-time. You have done an amazing job, and my son feels safe at school and is so happy to be back on campus. The weekly COVID testing is easy and is a huge help. However, I want to encourage you all to do whatever you think necessary to bring our kids back into the building full-time. Our teens need to be back in school all day and every day. Please bring them back before the end of the school year. In fact, I would encourage you to make it your goal to have them back in school full-time after spring break. If you have a goal in mind, I am confident that those of you who lead our district can make it happen. Current COVID-19 numbers in our area are declining. According to the IDPH website today, Lake County's test positivity rate, as seven-day rolling average, has been below 5% for the past 11 days, currently sitting at 3.6%. Additionally, the number of hospitalized COVID-19 patients has also been steadily declining. Our daughter works at Condell, and every day she works, she reports the number of COVID-19 patients to at Condell to our family. Condell's COVID-19 numbers have been steadily declining, as corroborated by the IDPH website, which shows that the number of patients hospitalized with COVID-19, also a seven-day rolling average, has been steadily decreasing since 2012-21. These trends are moving in the right direction for a return of our students to full-time schooling. And if you are worried about the health of our teachers, do what is necessary to get our teachers vaccinated. Please work hard to do this what is best for our teens. We can bring our teens and their teachers back to school safely. The best scenario for our students means full-time learning on their respective high school campuses. Bring our kids back full-time. Excuse me. The next message is from Rebecca Gaples and Simon Harrison. Board members, administrators, teachers, and staff, we just wanted to congratulate everyone on a smooth transition to hybrid learning. We think the setup of having kids attend four half-days a week has been a great form of consistency to this point, and our son appreciates being back in the building. We also appreciate all the mitigation measures that have been put into place to protect staff and students, in particular, the weekly COVID testing. Kudos on a job well done. And the next message is from David Acosta. School Board members, good evening. During tonight's meeting, it is important for you to explain your plan to have all students and teachers to immediately return to the classroom full-time. The hybrid model that our children have at LHS is not preparing them for the future, and it is not providing them the best learning experience for them to excel. This community wants pride in itself on providing top-of-the-line education and resources that other districts in the nation could only dream of, but now it has become a model of what is wrong with the overall system and how low a priority our students really are. Everything in life is a learning experience. We can't fix the past, but we can change the decisions that impact our future. It is clear that we have created a learning gap with our children that we have to fix now. On top of that learning gap, our children have become disengaged, depressed, and frustrated with this learning experience. They are also confused as to why their school has chosen to keep them in a hybrid model, given that other schools have forged ahead and returned full-time. The education they are currently receiving falls short of what we expect in this community. It is clear, now more than ever, that full-time in-person learning is safe and supported across the nation, and D-128 should be no different. When this first started a year ago, we all agree that the best situation was to go virtual to keep everyone safe, schools and businesses alike, because we were afraid and uneducated on this pandemic. Since then, we have learned more about our society, the virus, and our ability to adapt and overcome in challenging times from both a positive and negative perspective. This virus is and will continue to be endemic, just like the flu. Therefore, we have to learn to live with it and move on. Keeping kids out of full-time in-person instruction is not the right thing to do anymore, and quite frankly, no longer justifiable, which leads many of us to believe the decisions being made for this district are being driven politically instead of being based on real data and community need. Let me be clear, the unions do not represent the community and, in my opinion, do not accurately represent the educators either, as many of them wish to return to school as well. Returning to full-time in-person instruction is the right thing to do and has been since last fall when you voted against it. If students do not return immediately to full-time in-person instruction, then you need to get a plan on identifying how much of our taxpayer dollars will be refunded for perpetuating this situation. I realize the position you are in is difficult, the decisions you have to make impact thousands, and you will never please everyone, but if the school board cannot represent the students and the needs of this community, then we need a new school board that will. Thank you for your time. And the final letter is from a number of student organizations at Libertyville and Vernon Hills. Dear District 128 Board of Education, as student groups at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School, we have been aware of the ongoing conversation regarding the racial equity and inclusion policy, specifically as clubs that are passionate in ensuring our schools are equitable to all students and clubs that this policy will directly affect, we have been pleasantly overwhelmed by the efforts the district has made to pursue strides in the right direction. This policy comprises efforts that have already provided relief to many of us. This policy is needed. Racism, whether that be blatant or a microaggression, and a lack of accountability can no longer exist within our district. This policy works towards proactive change. We feel heard. Please adopt the racial equity and inclusion policy. And this was submitted by Student Supporting Equal Rights at Libertyville High School, Student Diversity Council at Vernon Hills, Black Student Union at Libertyville High School, Black Student Union at Vernon Hills, Gender Sexuality Alliance at Libertyville, Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Club at Vernon Hills, Muslim Student Association at Libertyville, and the Muslim Student Association at Vernon Hills. And that's all.
Okay, thanks.
Pat Groody, President.
First of all, I am going to acknowledge it today, I'm sure many of you realized it, so it was about a year ago today that this pandemic started. In fact, I think we had the very first few cases acknowledged almost exactly a year ago today. A year later today, we acknowledged the loss of 500,000 Americans. That's more Americans that were killed in all of World War II. So frankly speaking, any reference of COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic and its comparison to flu is just categorically incorrect. Okay? And I'm amazed that we still do that. Second, it is true, I think that the schools are among the safest places where our students can be, and there's a reason for that, because we have mitigations in place, and when you're in this building, you follow those mitigations, and there's no allowance for exceptions. And I think we have continued to show that that actually is making a substantive difference, and we need to continue to do that. And the last thing I'm going to say is, this board has not in any way, shape, or form made decisions related to this pandemic that were political, nor were they influenced by the union. Again, that's not to say that we haven't had conversations with our union members on the impact of the pandemic on the work that our teachers and staff do, we have, but at no point has the union not done, at no point has the union done anything other than exactly what we have asked them to do. Okay? So I'm just going to say it one more time. If you have problems with the decisions that we have a board have made, that's fine, I can accept that, but I can't accept that anybody believes that those decisions are politically motivated, and I can't accept that anybody wants to think that the union is responsible for the decisions that we've made, because that is just categorically incorrect.
Pat Groody, President.
Okay? Rest assured that not, I don't know, I don't think a day goes by these days that you and I aren't on the phone
Correct.
Talking about any and everything we can and plan to do to continue to move this ball forward. So if anybody thinks that because we've opened up in our hybrid model, that we have stopped trying to push the envelope and do what's necessary to safely open these buildings further for the good and welfare of our students and staff, they are sadly mistaken. Okay? And we'll follow up more on that later, but I want to just make it perfectly clear. There is no one sitting here tonight, and there's no one that I know of that's on the screen tonight, that is in any way, shape, or form of the opinion that we are finished, we've hit the milestone we need to hit, and we are done with this. Okay? And the last comment I'll make is, all of the decisions we make are focused on the safety and well-being of our students. Frankly speaking, I got to be honest, I get sick and tired of hearing people say we are not advocating for the well-being of our students. It is simply not the case. All right? I'm fine if that's your opinion, but I need to make sure that it's clear that there's an awful lot of people working very hard here who first inform most are not thinking about themselves, but they are thinking about the well-being of our students, fully acknowledging that there are a lot of things that we cannot do today that we did do a year ago, and because of that, there are sacrifices that our students need to make. Okay? But every single day, we continue to look at what actions we can take to further mitigate the impact of those situations that we've been dealt with. Okay? And I really want the community to understand that, because it's essential, and frankly speaking, I think it's important that the message that we send to our kids is that that's what we believe, that's what we're trying to do. Okay? It's not helping our kids when we tell them that people aren't advocating for them. All right? And so I'm just going to continue to plead with our community, to be supportive, to trust that we're doing the things that we can do. We always talk about, there's all these schools that are fully open. I mean, I thought the last that I heard was nationally, I think there's 30% or fewer of schools that are open even in a hybrid format.
Dr. Groody, as of a week and a half ago in the state of Illinois, less than 10% of the students in this state are learning in a fully in-person environment.
Yeah, and I think even in a hybrid format, I think we're one of, you know, I don't want to say a few, but certainly not the majority, or even in four days a week, from what I've read, anyway. Okay? And again, I want to be clear, we're not satisfied with that. That's not good enough. We get that. All right? And we're going to continue to work in making that happen. All right? So again, we'll cover that more in detail, but I just want to make sure that, before we lose people in the meeting, that they understand where we stand on that.
Pat, can I make one other comment? I think we hear this occasionally too, that somehow there are meetings behind the scenes that somehow I'm meeting
Grandissly Superintendent.
The board clandestinely, or somehow the board and the administration and the union are meeting behind closed doors to make these decisions. If you have followed this since last June, all of our meetings have been public, they have been long, they have been thorough, they have not always produced concordance and agreement, and several of the votes, or most of the votes, have been split votes as a result of that. But all of that has been done in a public arena, and so people that need evidence that we're having all of those conversations in a public forum, they can go back and watch all of the tapes and all of the future tapes as we talk about this issue. It's very important to know that, that by state law in Illinois, the superintendent cannot meet with more than two board members at a time without violating the law, and we don't violate the law here, moving forward. So all of these meetings, the committee meetings, the board meetings, special meetings that we've had, have all been done in a public forum. The board hasn't been prepped for those meetings ahead of time, they have seen the information in our presentations at the same time that the public has seen that information as we go through those, and then we have those deep, complex conversations that we need to have on a very deep, complex subject matter, and we're going to continue to operate that way, because that is the value system of this district, core value of this district in terms of transparency. So I just want to make sure that we continue to make that point as well, that there's not a plan behind the scenes where groups are getting together and deciding what we're doing or not doing. It's all done in this arena, just like we're in tonight.
Yeah. And then one final comment, I mean, I think one commitment I can make at this point, you know, it's been real interesting over the last, over the last year. I mean, we've had all kinds of feedback about, give me a choice. Let me decide, or let our students decide to be in school or not in school. Okay? And now the momentum has shifted. Give me a choice to be in school, but don't give the kids that can't be in school a choice. Okay? So I will say this, it is highly unlikely that between now and the end of the year, that we will not continue to give people a choice. Okay? I will, because I can say in the conversations that we've had, we're not discussing giving people who, for whatever their personal reason is, feel they cannot attend school under the current situation, we have not been having any conversations about forcing those people to come back, nor do I anticipate we will do so, at least for the remainder of this year. So I just want to put that to bed right now. Okay?
And Pat, the data on that across the district is, we are probably, I think Tom would say 65 to probably 66% of the kids in at Libertyville. John, you're probably 25-plus, 30, 33 right now. So we're in that ballpark, but when you put all of the kids together in the district, we're about 50% of the kids in and about 50% of the kids out. Neither of those numbers are insignificant numbers. So obviously, you know, people have responded to that choice, and whether you would be a remote arguing, everybody should be remote, or you're in person arguing, everybody should be in person, just realize that 50% of the other parents in the district feel strongly the other way, and that's important, and that's the reason that choice is important as we progress.
Okay. All right, so let's move on. I'm going to open it up now to the student school board reps for their updates tonight. Who's going to go first?
Um, okay, so Libertyville's
Okay, so Libertyville's going to start off with like a brief hybrid update. And then we'll just do like a regular activities. But yeah, so my updates just on COVID testing, it's still going super well. I do my test during a free period that I have. So I find out about my results on the drive home. It has gotten very efficient. And I also found that like a lot of students have now like found out that like they can actually take the COVID test like during a class period because more students now, I've noticed in my classes at least that more students are now doing so. And they're back within five minutes, so it doesn't take long at all. And I also like find myself enjoying my classes more because of like the teacher interactions. So that's all I have. So Quinn, do you want to give your update?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Amal. I don't have any complaints whatsoever. It's going great. I love being in school. It honestly feels like we've been in hybrid all year. I'm just super used to it, super comfortable. I started COVID testing and like Amal said, it's super efficient. My COVID testing is at the beginning of one of my classes. So I do miss between five and 10 minutes at the beginning of that class. But the teacher has no problem with it. He's super cool with it. You know, he knows what's going on, so there's no discrepancy there. And I only have good things to say. So I think we've done great going in hybrid. And I just look forward to the days or the afternoons when I'm in hybrid as opposed to online. Do you guys want to talk about hybrid?
Student representatives.
I think we're going to just do the report, so it stays a little organized. Okay, so the first ever Wildcat Summit, a student-led initiative, will be held this Wednesday. A Wildcat Summit is focused on a common vision of mental and physical health, healthy relationships and healthy discourse, and how we as Wildcats can move forward together. I'm super excited to attend the summit this Wednesday and learn from my peers about important topics that affect all high schoolers. The month of February and March is shine season at LHS. Shine season brightens up winter by shining a light on individuals who dare to shine by serving, helping, inspiring, noticing and engaging. These individuals can either be students or staff members. This year, everyone was sent a Google form asking to nominate an individual with those values. These individuals will be recognized on the student council Instagram as well as around the school and will receive an awesome T-shirt. On Thursday, February 11th, Dr. Kay, Ms. Yelix, Ms. Cruckman and Ms. Cardinale held the senior webinar where important senior topics were discussed. Seniors got to know more information about honors night, prom and graduation. Something I'm super excited for is that for this year, seniors do get to decorate their grad caps. I'm also super excited for the idea of graduation being on the football field if COVID allows that to happen. It would be such an awesome and memorable way to finish our four years at Libertyville. This Friday from 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM is senior comedy night. Seniors will be able to zoom in and watch comedian Michael Palisacks spread some laughter. This is so fun because we get to do our senior class and have a fun Friday night. Thank you to all staff for creating such an exciting event. This past Saturday, Model UN held an online conference run by LHS's Moon Exec Board. This conference was only for Libertyville students. It took place in 1989 regarding the fall of communism. Many Moon Club members expressed how fun and awesome this Moon Conference was. Academics teams such as Y is academic decathlon, scholastic fall and math team are in the midst of their competitive season right now. Good luck to participants in those clubs. On Friday, February 19th, Libertyville wore cups to honor Mr. Bogomel, who has recently passed. Mr. Bogomel was the most genuine and kind person, and I was so lucky to be under his guidance throughout my four years at LHS. I wouldn't be where I am today without him. He's truly impacted so many lives and he'll be forever remembered by me and many others. Quinn, do you want to go?
Yeah, thanks. So College Palooza has been going on through the month of February. Admissions directors from different colleges have been speaking to LHS and VHS, VHSs, VHHs students regarding the college admissions process. And the valuable insight helps juniors get going on the college admissions process. For scholarships, LHS scholarships were due on February 16th and scholarships were for fine armed students, student athletes and students pursuing trades and far more. Winners will be announced on senior night on May 18th, 2021. Ms. Bellstro is encouraging all students to report their college decisions on Navions to help future classes with their college planning process. Many seniors have received admissions decisions for early action and many colleges have delayed the regular decision notifications till late or to early April and late March. So winter sports are now in full swing with practices and games and they're being done so with social distancing and mask wearing. All athletes are currently being COVID tested at least once a week and games are either being streamed through the NFHS website or YouTube. And a number of sports are featuring a senior night in the near future. For spring sports, we are getting ready for tryouts in early March. And this weekend, soccer, football and lacrosse, all the team practices in the field house to get ready for those tryouts. As a soccer player, I'm very excited to get back on the field and very grateful to Libertyville and Vernon Hills and the IHSA for having our season and doing so under these crazy circumstances. I'm happy to announce that Libertyville Soccer already has 10 games scheduled for the spring, but Coach Dunholm did mention we had a bit of a tough time finding teams willing to play against us. But he attributed that to more to the teams not wanting to play against us due to our past record and reputation of Libertyville Soccer than COVID.
Victim of your own success.
Quinn, we should also give great thanks to Mr. Koopman and the District 128 grounds team because they've been out plowing and snow blowing the turf fields to get them ready for you guys to be able to kick the ball around out on the field next week. So thank you, Mr. Koopman.
Student representatives.
All right.
Thank you, LHS. To start off with our board report, we would like to honor the following students in the class of 2022 for being selected to the College Bound Opportunities Program. Congratulations to Rubiga Bluava, Sacha Agapanova, Jaslyn Baumgarten, Carlos Shears, Anthony Espinoza, Jackie Liu, Dasha Lukanova, Ming Nai and Anna Voichin. National Merit finalists were recently announced and all seven of our semifinalists were chosen as finalists. Congratulations to our 2021 National Merit finalist, Bradley Ah, Lisa Bamer, Chantel Corday, Naranjan Kulkarni, Ariof Panda and Eric Song and Ashley Ziegler. To continue on to clubs, in the month of February, student council hosts the Turnabout Dance. Although there will be no dance, the traditions of Turnabout Spirit Week will continue. In the full year today, student council members passed out treats to students entering the building. As for spirit days, today was Mask Up Monday, Tuesday is Zoom attire, Wednesday is College Gear Day. Thursday, students are asked to wear their class colors and Friday is Cougar Gear Day. National Honor Society is hosting a winter supply food drive on February 27th and March 6th from 12 to 4:00 PM. For those who are unable to drop off items at door 31 at VHS, there's an option for items to be picked up from your home on your porch. Yearbook clubs sent out senior and teacher super leave surveys to the class of 2021. The winners have been chosen and were requested to come to school at specific times on February 24th to have their pictures taken. Lastly, in honor of Black History Month, the VHS Black Student Union created a video explaining what Black Lives Matter means to them. Students of the club were featured in video clips and supporting clubs and staff submitted pictures of them holding a sign with the word or phrase stating what Black Lives Matter means to them. Special thanks to Mr. Phelan, Ms. Powell and Mr. Woody for their contributions. BSU also hosted a weekly Did You Know question asking students about black history in a Google form. Those who answered correctly were entered into a raffle in order to win prizes such as portable chargers, speakers and T-shirts. Onto sports, the dance and cheer teams have had a victory filled February. Not only have they been able to utilize the new dance studio, but they have placed at their virtual competitions. This Saturday will be the first in-person competition at conference. The cheer team has placed first and second in their latest competitions and have also broken a school record. Senior Kitty Hanson says that her team has strong program values and goals and are very unified. They hope to win sectionals and be in the top three at state. In just over one week, boys soccer and football start their outdoor spring season. As of Friday, there was still a foot of more of snow on all of our outdoor fields. Thanks to a small band of staff who took to our overground snow blower and cleared the artificial turf on Rustoleum Field. With the warm-up coming this week, the game should go on. This weekend saw small groups of parents and community members back in the building to watch sporting events. For the venues that have space to spread guests out, the VHS allowed two guests for each of our athletes participating in swim and dive and basketball. Not only was it refreshing to hear live cheering in the stands, the VHS fans witnessed two really impressive moments. Senior basketball player Danielle Gerald set the school record for assists in the varsity game on Saturday afternoon. On Friday night, junior diver Kevin Schumacher set the school record for highest six dive combined score. Now on to Diego.
Similarly to Quinn and Amal's comments regarding hybrid learning, I have greatly enjoyed my time in the building and I'm grateful for the chance to be back in person. No complaints from me and I look forward to seeing more of my classmates around in the weeks to come. Speaking of which, as of February 22nd, today, we've seen a very promising increase in students returning to the building, currently being back over the 500 student mark. That's a big deal. This is close to 33% of students back in the halls and it's already feeling a lot homier that way. Nothing new with the weekly COVID tests. I myself have carried on getting tested during my lunch hour. It has continued to be incredibly quick and efficient, as mentioned by Amal. One thing worth noting is that I'll now be setting an alarm for my slot since I did miss my last test. My mom was not happy about that. To any other students listening to the report right now, I highly recommend you do the same. And moving on, I wanted to comment on the Outdoor Education Ice Safety Rescue that took place about two weeks ago on Thursday and Friday. Students got an opportunity to practice the skills they learned in class in a real life situation with takeaways that could one day help them save themselves and others. Fun fact, this year's ice rescue was the coldest that's ever been done at the school. And I actually asked Officer Rodkey, said it was the coldest he's ever done, period. He cut through five inches of ice Thursday afternoon and by Friday morning, there was a three inch layer that had already formed over the hole. I actually got to break that with a sledgehammer. Big thanks goes out to Jerry Micali, Jesse Walters and Tony Rodkey, VHS students that came out in the morning in that freezing weather, as well as our countryside fire department as a whole. And furthermore, at this month's North Suburban Math D Contest, freshman Karen Cott and Candarp Vedya wrote perfect papers. The freshman topic was applications of system of linear equations and inequalities. Karen and Candarp have joined Junior Krish Asher as the only memrist to have written a perfect paper this year, with Krish also having done so this past summer. My final piece is that there's some exciting news. JSA launched its first collaboration with the Vernon Hills Police Department. I invited School Resource Officer Dan Me to join us as a guest speaker and upon being back fully in regular learning or at least next year, helped to facilitate future endeavors with our local police force. Kayla, go ahead.
Okay, Dr. G talks about pushing seniors to go back to the hybrid in the webinar Thursday night. For example, reassuring people that it's safe to finish off our senior year at school and to make our marks. Dr. G and Dr. Beagle also made some announcements about upcoming senior activities. For example, on Wednesday, we are having a warm-up Wednesday for seniors to come and pick up their sweet treats before school starts. Dr. G also talked about graduation and how that may work and the senior masquerade, which is in place at the prom. It's a formal event with a photo museum and different tasks to do all over the gym. There's also yard signs coming out to students later in the semester and even an EVH event in April with Joe Diamond and mind reading fun. There will also be a senior parade, a senior panoramic and more. Check out the video, send an email for some more information. Ceremony for the new gym coming out soon is dedicated to class of 2021. I along with Diego, Eva, Evan Leary and Sanjay Shreeta went to the new gym last Sunday and filmed a ceremony dedicating the new gym to the senior class of 2021. By the way, it was beautiful. We recognized each other's achievements this year and cut a ribbon, even got a speech from Dr. Beagle and Dr. G on how much they appreciate the senior class. Check out your email for when the video comes out. Along with lines with helping senior students, a lucky barn girl yesterday. There was a fundraiser to help the Jackie Ferguson Student Scholarship Fund. Shout out to Ms. Baranik. Ms. Baranik has done a great job making e-learning fun by bringing in guest speakers every Wednesday. Diego and I are in her class right now and we really enjoy the people we get to meet and their stories that we have heard. It is a great break from what we normally do and has inspired me to go into pre-law. We really enjoy the people you bring in to talk to us and have made each week feel a little more special. A couple of weeks ago, February 5th, was the Winter Play Party Hop. Mary Pallett, a character in the play, told me it was about three college girls hopping off to different parties. For example, a birthday party, a cocktail party and a house party, which took three years, took place three years into quarantine. She also told me that Spryacles, the director, was a great asset. And also, One Axe is coming up, which is on February 26th. I talked to one of the directors, Mia Stefani, who told me that the shows will premiere on Friday of this week and will be available for streaming all weekend. It is free so anyone can see it. And the website link will be in e-paw prints and on the theater section of the VHS website. And that concludes the student board report. Thank you for letting us use our voices.
Great job, every one of you guys. I do have two very simple questions for you actually before we move on. And the first is, I mean, I've really missed not having any lunch. I have no idea where we're at in the whole college application process. So has anybody decided yet where they're headed? Not yet? Everything's delayed? Okay. All right, so we still look forward to that and hearing the great news there. Second thing, just one real quick question on testing. You guys have all talked very favorably of it. You know, one of the things we would still like to do is increase participation. Do any of you have any suggestions on things from a student perspective we might do to encourage others to participate?
Student representatives.
On my end, I guess the closest thing I could say is making it, you know, keep pushing it out there, more emails. Maybe some kids don't even know yet. I mean, you never know with that. And perhaps, and this is the trickier part, but facilitating like scheduling individually. I know a lot of kids aren't seniors like me, right? They don't have a car, they might not be able to get in there in an awkward time in between classes or on a day they're not in the building, stuff like that. But obviously, that's easier said than done. Beyond that, it really is going smoothly.
I do have a question. So students who have recently tested positive and have quarantined and come back, are they allowed to get COVID tested? Because that could also be why a lot of kids, not a lot, but like a handful of kids, aren't getting tested because they're waiting that three month period out. That's just a question.
Yeah, I thought a guidance from Passport Health was not to get tested once they've been out. Is that correct?
On Gouiao principle.
That's correct because if they get tested again, the proteins are still there and they get positive read again. So just because they've waited their, you know, their 14 day quarantine period doesn't mean that they won't hit another positive when they get retested. So that's why they don't want them to test again.
Yeah, that and the other reason of like seniors and juniors not have, like AP sciences go into, like I do early bird, so I have lunch, but they go into that period. And a lot of times are full right now. So maybe that like that half, like that half frame that they actually do have isn't like available. And a lot of like kids who are taking those rigorous courses could feel like they're like missing content, even if it's just for 10 minutes. So that's another thing that I've heard a lot of students, my like senior friends who are in like those hard courses say. So.
Okay, all right, thanks. Anyone else?
Pat Rudy, President.
All right, great feedback. Once again, I just really, really appreciate your perspectives. Have never been more valuable to us, I don't think, than they have been this year. So really appreciate it and absolutely appreciate everything you guys are doing to just make the most of a very challenging year. All right, so I have one other thing. Just to report into the record, this week, we completed our performance evaluation for Dr. Lee. It's an annual process. And I do want the public to know that Dr. Lee is evaluated on six different criteria, which include the board and superintendent relationship, personnel, fiscal accountability and budgets, student relations, planning and goals. And then there's a series of goal initiatives talking about student achievement, technology and finances. So each of the board members submits to me their evaluation of Dr. Lee's performance. The board unanimously agreed that Dr. Lee has met all expectations. So I've summarized those comments for him and submitted it to him. And that really completes our annual review. Given that this is our last annual review of Dr. Lee, I just want to take this chance to just, you know, say thanks, which really frankly doesn't seem like enough, but to say thanks for his outstanding leadership over the last 13 years. There is no doubt that this district wouldn't be where it is today without his leadership and what he has done to grow and nurture just an incredible staff of people. And especially in the past year. I don't think we've ever appreciated it as much as we have this year. So you're not done yet, but I'm here to tell you, you will be sorely missed. And I just want to say again for the public how much we appreciate all of your hard work and commitment to our students, staff and community. With that, back to work, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Pat, and to the board, to the administrators, teachers, support staff, parents, community members.
Frankestley Superintendent.
It's been an incredible honor to continue to lead this district. And we'll have more time to maybe reminisce as I get closer to the end. Now we have business to do, so we'll get to that. So a little bit more good news. Tonight, 14 VHS students were named February.[1769.94] So a little bit more good news, uh, tonight, 14 V H H S students were named February Ellen Swick Cougar Class Award recipients. Madison Charello, Sebastian Dudik, Paige Adelhite, Ryan Ellis, Lalani Guzman, Matthew J. Uh, Ethan Kistnick, Michael Kim, Rebjev Myrtle, Itzel Okampo. Kim Otto, Derek Pasqual, Will Schart and Magdalena Zukek. Students were nominated by V H H S staff for embodying the daring mission values. For bringing light and joy to hybrid classrooms, for seeking out opportunities to help other students succeed. For creating a sense of community and inclusivity. With others for helping, um, to adjust to hybrid more smoothly. And for taking the time to foster relationships with their classmates and teachers. Eighteen L H S students were named January true Wildcats Catherine Zidek, Stella Meyer, Lilian Van Dixorn. Laura Martinez, Haseo Morales, John Nelson, Alana Howell, Michael John. Emma Lindeman, Caroline Scott, Olivia Devoe, Cicely Bobbitt. Uh, Leanne Tam, Edward Stewart, Dylan McDonald, Caitlin McCarty. Jimmy Wexler and Alex Clark. V H H S junior, uh, Shayna Weinstein was named a 2021 award for aspirations in computing. Recipient by the National Center for Women and Informational Technology. The award recognizes nominees for their aptitude and aspirations in technology and computing. The District 128 Foundation for Learning continued its mission to enhance and enrich learning in Community High School District 128. By awarding six daring innovation grants totaling $9,074 to L H S and V H H S teachers Mark Busing. Teresa Elmore, Christine Falkstrom, Ryan Feeny, Heidi Lechner. Adam Lucan, Jerry Misseli, Brandon Murchison, Suzanne Torrance, Chris Wolf. And Jesse Walter. The 2020 21 grant winners were announced and celebrated during the foundation's second annual 128 Day of Giving on January 28th. This year's grants brought the total number of grants awarded by the foundation since 2008 to 169. And the total dollars funded to 254,813 dollars. In addition, the foundation has given money to the high schools for project funding and assistance for students in need. To date, the foundation has given L H S and V H H S 480,420 dollars. In funding for, um, these initiatives. I want to thank the foundation. We started. Married 13, 14 years ago with the foundation. They didn't have a penny to their name. And they've given over 480,000 out raised and awarded over $480,000 in the last, you know, 12, 13 years. It's just an amazing story at no additional cost to taxpayers. Which is maybe, uh, part of the, the best story here. Okay? Um, so again, congratulations to everyone. And it's always good to report news and it's good now that we have. Uh, some athletics and extra, extracurricular activities. We have some students back in school. Uh, to be recognizing students again, um, because that's such a fun part of what we do. Uh, across the board. I'm sure John and Tom would certainly agree with that. Okay. Next on the superintendent's report tonight is capital projects. So I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Dan and Mark or Mark and Dan.
Yeah, um, so just a final report on the L H S. Uh, new pool that we built, uh, a while ago, we've paid out. Um, our final bill and I've finalized all the numbers. And believe it or not, we ended up under budget by $4,000. Uh, there's a few adjustments I had to make to some trades that didn't pay out. So. Yeah, that's exciting considering, you know. I don't know if it was a year ago or two years ago, now that we were.
About a year ago, yeah.
Looking at, um, potentially being 200 grand over. But Gil Bain really came in for us and hunkered down in the numbers and trying to figure out stuff. So, uh, very fortunate to have that project. Uh, workout. So that's exciting. Uh, Vernon Hills, we're trucking along. Um, you know, our contingency is, is, you know, I'm told really close to being out. Um, and so we're, we're going to kind of keep watching that, um, but. I'll have to give you some more information about that project a little bit later. You know, I mentioned before, it's been a, it's been a few months since. Uh, but some of our owner's costs in terms of furniture and equipment and stuff like that. Uh, we, we were a little light on when we were estimating that coming in. So. Um, probably need another one to 200,000 for that, but I'll, I'll give you better information on that in the future. It's nothing urgent. Um, that, and so with that, I'll turn it to Mark for.
Mark Copman, B and G.
Construction progress.
Okay, uh, construction progress. Um, we're working on our punch list items over here at Vernon Hills, uh, finishing up a few things around. Um, uh, nearing completion with the punch list.
But all the major work is done, right? All the major work is done.
Yeah, all the major work is done and all the spaces are being used and occupied. So, uh, we're in great shape. Yeah.
And John, uh, you and I talked a little bit today and you had a little bit of a. Really cool circumstance this week in the cafeteria. Do you want to mention what's going on in the cafeteria this week for the first time in a long time?
On G Y L principle.
Well, this, this week's marks the, uh, first time we're having students back, uh, for full days. So we have for the first time students eating lunch in the building. Uh, and so really the first time that our, our brand new cafeteria, which is just gorgeous, so thankful to the board for, uh. You know, allocating the resources for that, uh, but we're making lunches, serving lunches. They're in a box right now, but, uh, hot lunches are coming soon. I'm sure of it. So thank you very much.
And so, you know, we will give the board an invitation to come visit for lunch when it's safe to do that at some point, right?
Yeah, for sure. We'll do that. And, and, um, Kayla talked about our gym dedication that we did to the class of 2021. They all left their mark, uh, tagging the floor, um, earlier in September, if you remember that. So we dedicated that space to them. Had a nice, uh, dedication ceremony on Sunday and there'll be a video going out, uh, and we'll send it, make sure the board gets it too. So thanks.
And John, just for clarification then, um, so what group of students are, are coming and, um, you know, able to access the building all day?
On G Y L principle.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have, you know, we still have our hybrid A B split. And, uh, those students, uh, while those numbers, uh, have gone up for us, still remain around 25, 30%. Uh, but we've also invited a group of students, uh, with more probably special needs, some students with I E Ps. Some students that are L S Ts are recommending, uh, are here full days. So those students. Uh, don't have that opportunity to head home during lunch. Uh, so we're keeping them here at school. So if you come in, you know, during that 11:15 to 12:30, um, you know, segment during the day, you'll find about 50 to 60 kids. In, uh, our two lunch facilities, uh, eating lunch. Went well today, felt safe, felt distanced and, uh, uh. Just pleased with our staff, our support staff making that work.
So meeting students' needs and additional assistance they may need. That'd be accurate, John?
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you. Um, okay, we want to. Real quick on that topic, we had talked about having the board have the, the ability to, to take a walk around and see some of these spaces? Any?
Uh, yes, we're going to do that, uh, before or right at the start of the, uh, F and F committee meeting in, um, March.
In March, okay.
And it'll be.
I know we talked about it.
It'll be socially distanced, of course. We'll ensure that we're all, you know, we're following all the protocol, but. Uh, it is, uh, pretty incredible. We are, um, with almost the completion of, uh, these facilities.
Uh, we're about 52 million dollars of, uh, major capital work that we did. Uh, we feel very good about that and, and hopefully that will take the district, you know, the next 25, 50 years. Um, and that was at no additional cost, uh, to taxpayers at least, uh, still leaves us a, a good working reserve. Uh, rainy day fund, however you want to look at that. And Dan can report on that, um, you know, at another meeting. Um, we can talk about where that will, will leave us, but that was part of our initial, uh, planning. And, uh, the one capital project, major capital project we are working on right now. Uh, is, uh, the field house at L H S. So as the boards aware and we'll continue to work on that. So.
So on the, on the field house, um, I want Mark to be able to just provide an update, but before I do that. Um, at our last meeting, um. One of the, one of the requests was to talk about, uh, what would contingency plans look like if. Yeah. Um, God forbid that the field house would not be completed by either the start of school and then even for. Um, the start of fall sports. And so, uh, talk to the L H S, L H S team. Um, until Tom is here remotely. Uh, uh, Tom, I'll pass that baton over to you if you want to be able to talk about, um, what's your team is discussed in terms of, um, contingency plans.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Dan. Um, we. Uh, met and said, you know, kind of two levels, uh, like you said, what if the field house is not ready at the start of fall sports season? Which we anticipate being, uh, August 9th, 2021. Uh, what would that do for athletics and how would that impact our P E and physical wellness program? Um, and then we also looked at it, uh, if we weren't ready for the start of winter sports on October 25th. That's the projected start time. How would that influence athletics and P E? Um, we've developed, uh, very thorough plans for each. Um, I would say the, if we're not ready on Monday, August 9th, um. It'll have a relatively minimal impact on athletics. Um, because we're, most of our sports are outside, uh, to begin with. Most of our P E classes, uh, are able to be outside at that time of the year. Um, it would just mean that we might have to move some of our cla- our sports. To some earlier morning practice or some later evening practices. Uh, we might want to. Uh, partner with District 70 to perhaps move some of our sports to their offsite locations, working with them. Um, which we're doing right now for some of our sports, uh, this spring. Um, worst case scenario is if we were really restricted on space. Uh, we might have to go to like a five day a week practice schedule instead of a six day a week practice schedule and rotate our teams through that. But we think that would be a very minimal impact. Um, if we get though to the winter and we don't have the field house ready by October 25th. That's going to be a much more challenging situation for us. Uh, not only would our P E classes need to be moving inside at that point during the year. But we have so many sports that are going at that time. Uh, four levels of boys basketball, four levels of girls basketball, two levels of cheerleading, one level of dance. Um, that would not be in the dance studio. We would have to find space for them. Um, so, you know, we would make the spaces available that we would have. We would extend practices. To later in the evening, we would extend practices to early in the morning. Uh, we would probably have to rotate again, uh, the amount of practice time that the students had. And, uh, perhaps even cap some of the days for some of our under level, um, sports, just to make sure we were. Kind of rotating all of our teams through those spaces until. We got back to a place where the gyms and the field houses would all be available to us. It's not insurmountable. Um, definitely the fall is, you know, I would say of kind of minor concern to us. Um, we think, we think we'd be all right there, but the winter would be a significant challenge. And it would definitely impact, um, you know, the scheduling of the students and the amount of time they would have to practice. Because we would just be trying to fit everybody into, um, essentially the west gym and the main gym at that point.
Thanks, Tom.
Hey, Tom, just Kevin, uh, question for you. Have we talked to Mayor Wepler or future Mayor Donna Johnson about. Optionality of the Libertyville Sports Complex? Uh, just to have that option potentially out there if we needed it, especially for the winter stuff.
Um, you know what, Kevin? I'll have to get back to you on that one. Uh, we've had discussions with them in the past. Um, it wasn't for a lot of different reasons in the past. It wasn't always the easiest partnership. Um, for a lot of the constraints that they have and a lot of the constraints that we have. Um, but I don't know if any discussions were had about, uh, moving forward next fall. Um, and the use of the sports complex. So I'll have to get back to you on that one.
All right, thanks.
Kevin, that's a, that's a great question, Kevin, and it's one that we will pursue. Uh, because if we're going to move forward with the field house, we have to plan for that contingency just in case of course. Which is why we're talking about it. You asked a really good question. So. Uh, we will follow up with the village and see what possible options are there. And where they're at at that time and the availability of space as well as any other possible space. But I think that's the most obvious, uh, possibility at this point.
Um, Mark, do you want to just give an update on? Where we're at in terms of design and, and bid stuff. And one reminder also is that. Um, we talked about that our April, uh, committee meeting, we would turn to a special meeting so that we can accept the bids then. Just reminder on that. So.
Okay, um, we've been doing more in-depth investigation, uh, as we've been going along, uh, with electrical, structural. And, um, onsite visits at, uh, the field house. Um. Uh, making sure that all our calculations and everything are good for the roof and that. We've got our, uh, this morning, um. Uh, or sometime today, I received, uh, the equipment list for HVAC equipment. Uh, the specifications on that. So I'll be going through that with our HVAC consultant tomorrow. And then we'll work towards, um. Uh, getting pricing for that equipment. Uh, so we're ready for next month. So I have pricing, uh. We're looking to purchase all that equipment ahead of time because of lead time. So we have it onsite. Um, and it also is part of that is our summer HVAC work at. Um, at Libertyville High School for areas that we're wanting to adjust this summer. We'll also order equipment for that other capital project, uh, uh, at that point. So, um, things are moving forward. We're working on details. Um, for instance, like the, you know, what lines we need, the court layouts on the floor, things like that. Um, so. Uh, things are going smoothly, uh, and, uh, we've made a lot of progress. So.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Anything else on capital projects? Okay. So, uh, let's work through, uh, our, our monthly list, uh, as, um, we talk about where we're at. Uh, things might impact that. As, uh, the public is aware. I think most people are aware that the CDC, um, last week issued its. Long awaited and much anticipated, uh, guidance update. This is the first, uh, update. Uh, since, uh, the Biden administration has taken, um, uh, office at the White House. Um, and so honestly, um. We, we weren't sure, uh, what that was going to look like. So we want to take an opportunity tonight. Just to, Brent was nice enough to put, uh, several slides for us together tonight that we can review. But we want to cover the CDC guidance, kind of the highlights tonight, just review the I D P H guidance now. Why do we do this? We're not doing this so we can't bring kids back to school at some point. We're reviewing that guidance so we understand that guidance in the context of trying to kid, keep kids. And staff healthy and safe while we're trying to bring. Or, or provide more opportunities for kids to come back to school. So everything is context, but it's important that, you know, the board knows that. We know that administratively, but also that the community knows that. Uh, and we'll have some more conversation, uh, about this later. So Bryant, if you want to pull up the slide you put together for us. Um, we'll start going through.
Brian Kelly, Associate Superintendent.
And I'm going to let Bryant move the slides for us. So, uh, Bryant, you can go down to the next slide.
Thanks, thanks, Prentice. And, um, so as Prentice said, uh, the, you know, the CDC released this operational strategy on February 12th. Um, again, their operational strategy is like I D P H, just like Lake County. I S B E, everything's based off of the best available evidence, you know, at the time of release. Um, so as, you know, our science, our data continue to evolve. Um, you know, guidance and recommendations be updated to reflect this new evidence. This is intended also, the CDC obviously has been giving us guidance. Um, since last spring or the summer. And so this is just intended to complement all their current guidance, um, that they have in place. You know, for schools. Um. You know, this does, it does provide an operational strategy for K through 12 schools, um, and opening and remaining in-person instruction. Um, some of the key elements include, um, the key, the consistent, um. Implementation of layered mitigation strategies. And I'll kind of touch on that, uh, to reduce the transmission of COVID-19. Um, indicators of community transmission to reflect liberty, level of community risk. And I know Pat's going to touch on that when he looks at metrics. And just talk about that a little bit. Um, and then that phase mitigation, the learning modes are based off of the, uh, level of community transmission. Um, the five key mitigation strategies that the CDC talks about. These may look familiar to a lot of things that we've been doing up to this point and look familiar to I D P H. Universal incorrect use of masks, physical distancing, six feet, hand washing, um, and respiratory etiquette. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities and contact tracing, combination with isolation and quarantine. In collaboration with your local health department following I D P H and Lake County. And that's what our, um, nurses, uh, do every day. So again, uh, you know, what they released, um, these strategies, um, we already have in place at our schools and are, uh, continuing. Um, to keep those in place. So some of that like indicators of community transmission. that, you know, we, school administrators working with, again, local health departments should assess the level of risk in the community since the risk of, you know, bringing that into school is dependent on the level of community transmission. So they're, they're related. Obviously, our, our students are in the community, staff is in the community. And so we need to kind of, we need to look at the community transmission. So what they look at is two measures of community burden. And I know this is what Pat will talk about in metrics, is the total number of new cases per hundred thousand and the, the number of test results positive during the last seven days. While the risk of exposure to COVID-19 may be lower, when the indicators that community spread are lower, the risk is also dependent upon, again, the implementation of school and community mitigation strategy. So even though, you know, levels may go down in the community, you can't just throw all your mitigation out the window and not follow that to keep schools open. So again, going back to those, you know, key mitigation, you know, the, really the five things that they talk about, again, physical distancing, masks, hand washing etiquette, cleaning and contact tracing. So even though spread may be low in the community, you still have to continue to follow everything. So again, your recommended level of learning mode is dependent on the community transmission and also again, strict adherence to mitigation. So one of the things that really came out though, is that they talk about K through 12 schools should be the last settings to close after all other mitigation measures in the community have been employed and the first to reopen when they can do so safely. So they said schools should prioritize for reopening or remain open for in-person over non-essential businesses and activities, even including, you know, your extracurricular activities to risk, to minimize the risk of transmission in schools. But again, the learning mode is dependent upon, so they're not saying full in-person. They're saying your level of learning mode, in-person, hybrid or, you know, virtual, again, looking at what your, you know, community spread is. So, you know, those are some of the things that they talk about with the learning modes. The other thing, and this is something that we're implementing really, when you're looking at your phase mitigation, that you should prioritize in-person instruction for students with disabilities who may require special education or related services directly involved in the school environment. And so this is, you know, what John talked about earlier, is that now we have students that are here, you know, all day, you know, for school. So we put priority on, you know, those students. The other part is that if, when schools can implement testing combined with all of those key mitigation strategies, including symptom checking, we can help to detect new cases to prevent outbreaks, reduce the risk of further transmission and protect our students, staff and teachers from COVID-19. So again, we're doing the testing. So the testing is another piece in all of those mitigations. But you can, you know, if you have an asymptomatic person that tests positive, you're able to prevent maybe some outbreaks in the school. So they said that was important. And again, what, like we're doing, the testing should be, you know, offered on a voluntary basis. So how does that CDC, the new, you know, you know, the document that they released on February 12th, how does that tie into, you know, what we're doing or what ISBE and IDPH, their school guidance? So going back to their guidance, they, you know, this is right from what ISBE and IDPH, their school guidance that they released, that they require the use of appropriate PPE. They talk about prohibiting more than 50 individuals in one space, require social distancing, require that school conducts symptom screenings and temperature checks, and then require an increase in school-wide cleaning disinfection. So those are same of the key mitigation that the CDC, you know, just talked about. You know, the other thing, going back to the contact tracing, that was one of their other five key mitigation strategies. So close contact again, is anyone with or without a face covering who's within six feet of a confirmed case for a cumulative total of 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. The other thing you have to look at with contact tracing, and this is where it takes time to do the contact tracing, is that you're looking at the infection period begins two calendar days before the onset of symptoms or two calendar days before the positive sample. So every time that, you know, we have a case that our nurses get and we have a asymptomatic person that tests positive or asymptomatic student or asymptomatic staff member. So the contact tracing is just where that person is at that exact moment. But they have to do a lot of work of where that person has been. And that's where the time comes in and looking at the previous two days so that then you can determine who those, the close contacts. Now, one of the updates from, you know, the CDC and then IDPH and now Lake County, as of 2/8, they are permitting a reduced option of a 10-day quarantine for close contacts as long as that person remains asymptomatic and then also can continue to social distance and mask during days 11 through 14. So it always was a 14-day and now Lake County has, is followed. CDC and IDPH allowing us to go to the reduced quarantine. So you could see that the CDC, what they just released on February 12th, ties in really closely to ISBE, IDPH. It ties into what we're doing in our schools to, to keep our students in school and safe. So.
Right, can I ask one, one question on the social distancing? Because this is always considered guidance, not a requirement. I mean, on social distancing, the, I think there was a statement in there as, as much as possible on six feet?
Yeah, that was under IDPH and ISBE.
Yeah, but isn't that, that's intended to address the fact that in a hallway, for example, you can't social distance necessarily six feet. It's not necessarily intended to say, hey, if you got to jam 40 students in a classroom and they're only going to be three feet apart, that's okay. That was my understanding and I just.
Correct. And, and the thing, when you look at, again, close contact, so you may be within close contact with somebody in a hallway, but you're just passing them. And so cumulative time of 15 minutes. That's why we don't encourage our students to stand in the hallway and talk. We encourage them to, you know, continue from class to class. So if you're looking at, you know, the cumulative time, yeah, there's times that you're passing by somebody, just like you do in the grocery store, just like you do in the community. But your cumulative time with them, you're not within six feet for more than 15 minutes.
Okay.
Hey, Bryant, going back to the CDC, and again, it's kind of along the same lines as Pat, the social distancing. I know when it first came out, you wrote us kind of a summary and it indicated that this, that social distancing was kind of kept pretty consistent. Although I continue to read where they have made it a little bit more flexible and actually a lot more flexible. And I guess I'm confused on our interpretation versus others about what the CDC really did that, because we all know President Biden has come out and said, if he's going to achieve it or not, we don't know, but he wants kids full-time in class, right? And so just can you help us understand really what that CDC, social distancing, the change there and why some people think it's opened it up for more flexibility for local school boards? And why we, at least in the summary you wrote for us, you kind of took more of a conservative approach?
But Kevin, before he responds to that, I just want to clarify. I mean, Biden's been very specific over the last, I think, two weeks anyway. He is emphasizing full-time, in-person, K through eight or, you know, even, not even middle school, depending on the situation. He has distinctly carved out high schools, if you've listened carefully to what he's been saying these days. He has, when he was in Milwaukee, I think, last week, he made a specific point of saying, hey, in high schools, it's different, it's a lot harder. So I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, no, and again, completely understanding. But again, I'm confused on the CDC, why some people think the flexibility is there? And I, again, I don't know, I'm not smart enough. I know, I asked Prentice if we could have a special meeting later on down the line where the attorney can come in basically and help us with this. Because we don't know, none of us know.
But. So if you look at the CDC, they're recommending six feet and same with IDPH and ISBE. And then if we work with our local Lake County Health Department, they are saying six feet, you know, distance. And that's what we have to go on. So sometimes there, there's, you know, they'll say, dependent upon your local health department. And Lake County Health Department, we're at six feet distance. And so that's what, you know, the, what we have to work on in Lake County with our schools.
Yeah, but what did the CDC change, I guess, to create this perceived by some people? And again, I.
So originally, I think before this came out, there was a perception that they were going to reduce the six feet distance. And they didn't, you know, the way I read it and the way the attorneys that, you know, I've talked to and gotten guidance from in Illinois is that they are still looking at six feet distance.
Okay, and is there any accountability for all the testing we're doing? Whereas with the vast amount of resources we're spending on testing, is there any little ask or skin there basically saying whatever distance? Well, we'll never get rid of masking, of course, but distancing can be lax, more lax? If you're testing weekly, bi-weekly, whatever it may be?
Just, the testing allows you just to be able to keep the schools, you know, open and allow students to come back to school. But it doesn't say that you just can throw physical distancing out the window or anything.
All right, yeah, I appreciate it, Bryant, thank you. And again, I would just encourage, maybe we can have a special meeting just to talk about this. And I think Prentice is already thinking about it, so, thanks.
Yeah, that's, and, and I'll, I'll talk about this a little bit later as we work our way down the, our COVID list tonight. But I think what school boards and, and school districts are going to wrestle with this spring with, if they're, if they're able to do testing, if their local data is very good as teachers get vaccinated, is the conversation about, about that interplay with, with social distancing. And I think that's where the conversation is going to be here, Kevin. And I think that's where it's going to be, you know, everywhere at the high school level. And of course, we can only talk about the high school level. As Pat has indicated, has more challenges because the kids are mobile in the building and, and they're older where you can self-contain in elementary schools. And I think that's going to be part of the discussion. And I think as our discussion here progresses, that's going to be part of the conversation, you know, as well. I think at the end point, if you look at, if there's not some flexibility down the road with the six-foot social distancing, then you could look at it from this perspective, when are we ever going to be able to start school again? Right? I mean, at some point, right? So I think as we continue this conversation and we look at late spring, certainly next year, but late spring is we're looking at possibilities to give people options to bring more kids back in the building. You know, that's a conversation we're going to have, districts around us are going to have, districts in the Midwest and across the country are going to have to have with six foot, you know, with six foot social distancing. But knowing that that's in a very important conversation. So again, to your point asking clarification questions, Kevin, we want to try and understand this the best we can and factor that into conversation and decision-making that we might need to make down the line. That's a very important part of this.
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Prentice Lee, Superintendent.
Okay, so what, one more thing before we move on and then I'll ask you, Kevin's right, I'll ask you about special meetings so we can kind of hunker down on this. And I'll invite Lynn Heims to the meeting. Because what local boards also want to understand is liability. Not that that's, you know, the primary decision-maker, but it's certainly something that you have to be cognizant of. You know, you've heard me talk about that several times, really from conversations with Lynn. But we would invite Lynn to that meeting. So you have, he has an opportunity to give you his take, but you also have an opportunity to ask him some questions too. So again, it's all about understanding, and I think to go to Pat's point earlier, as we continue to look at, you know, we get towards spring break and we look toward late spring, you know, do we have the opportunity to provide some, some kids in some number, some option, you know, for longer periods in school? And we're going to be having that discussion internally and then we'll be sharing, you know, some of those thoughts, I think, with the board when we have the special meeting and moving forward. Hey, does that make sense? Okay, so, and let me underscore at this point, again, I was going to make the, some of these comments later tonight, but let me underscore again, for anybody that's, that's watching or taping the meeting tonight, our plan for next year, we are planning to open school normally next year. Okay, but we will also have all the tools in the toolbox, depending on wherever the world is at. You know, at the time that the, Dr. Herman, the new superintendent and the board, will have to work through that decision-making process. But the default is, one more time, the default is we are planning for a normal opening of school next year. Okay, and in the interim, we're talking about, are there options to, to give parents and kids options to be in the building longer, okay, you know, during the week? And that's really where, you know, our conversation is moving for this spring. Okay, all right, any other questions on that? Kevin, did I answer your, did, between Bryant and I, did we kind of answer your question?
Yeah, you did. I think the only other question I actually may have for you, Prentice, and I know you and I both try to work Springfield and the federal level. And the only information I'm getting back is they've left a purposely vague for us to make a decision. That, that's all, that's all they tell me. And again, when I see Bryant's report about best possible and when a parent, I don't know if they're ever going to help us. And so, and again, I told you I would kind of report back to you what I know. And then that's kind of, they, they have purpose. And again, I call some of my friends down in Washington as well, and they have purposely left it vague. That's all they tell me. And that's why I kind of asked Bryant that question, because I don't know if I see the vagueness.
But we're really, we're really working with Lake County and Lake County is the one that's really adhering to the six feet. So when we work with their help, local health department.
Okay, yeah, and maybe we'll, we'll invite them or talk with them as well to special meeting and kind of, because I like to see what they have to say about the national state politicians saying vague, so.
And I, and I think again, you know, I'll go back to a couple of comments I made earlier. I think for all schools in the Chicago metro area, in the state of Illinois and Midwest across the United States, as schools are in a similar position to what we're in, part of what they're going to have to wrestle with and we're going to have to wrestle with is the six-foot social distancing as part of that equation, right? And so that's why I wanted to just acknowledge that upfront. We're going to, we're going to have to have some conversation about that in looking at options to move forward. And again, it doesn't mean, you know, we won't go, we will go, but we just need, again, to be cognizant and have all the information when, you know, we have that conversation.
Yeah, and the 50, I think the 50 is also a little bit of a hiccup for us as well, right?
I, and just let me make a comment on 50, because this has bothered me from the time the guidance came out this. So just so everyone understands, what this, what the state guidance has been is that we can have no more than 50 people in a space. So where that impacts high schools particularly is trying to feed students lunch. Because we have larger numbers of students, we have limited space, even in the beautiful expanded cafeteria at Vernon Hills, we still have to have multiple lunch periods, right? And the same thing is true at LHS. And so alternatively, what a lot of high schools looked at at the beginning, and we did too, was could we use a gym, for example, in addition to the cafeteria, spread the kids out and the guidance remained 50 students? So it wasn't based, for the math folks out there, it wasn't based on a square footage calculation. Like you can have X bodies in X amount of square feet. So the cap was for any space, which greatly handicaps us because we don't have the ability to put 51 kids in a large gymnasium or field house, even if they're 35 feet apart, based on the guidance. So, you know, that becomes challenging too. One of the logistics we would have to overcome would be lunch. We've talked about some options of, you know, tents and, and some other things. So all of those things would be on the table. But again, that's something that, you know, we'd have to work with John and Tom and their teams and see what they would need to support whatever numbers of kids that we would have in the building to be able to feed them lunch, for example. So people just say, well, put them in the gym and feed them. Well, on the guidance that we've had from IDPH and ISBE since the summer, we're capped at 50 people in a space, not by numbers of bodies at square footage. I know it makes no sense, right? But that's part of the guidance. So, you know, we would have to kind of work with that and talk about that as well, moving forward. So.
It also doesn't make sense from the other extreme either. If you have an office, somebody's office, I mean, 50 people want to cram into John's office, that's not legit either, because it's not big enough to hold 50 people at six feet apart. So it just doesn't make sense that that one. that that one size fits all, 50 people maximum.
Well, and Jim, take, and you can take that one step further. And I know I've, I've talked to the board, Kevin and I have talked about this several times this summer. But you can also put 50 kids on a school bus with a maybe six and a half foot roof, no special ventilation, and Don and Dan sitting next together on a bus, and then same seat with Kevin sitting in the seat two feet in front of them. That's okay. But we can't put 51 kids in the gym to feed them. So, you know, there's some ironies that we have to work through here. And I appreciate Kevin's work. Kevin and I, we, we work well legislatively. Well, we work it well in everything, but we work well legislatively. Kevin's got a nice set of contacts. I have a different set of contacts. We're all often able to use those different contacts in, in getting information, having conversations with people. So thanks, Kevin. I appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions on this? I think that kind of frames out broadly, you know, some of the discussions that we need to continue to have moving forward. So Pat, we're going to turn it over to you. Thank you, Bryant. And we're going to turn it over to Pat for metrics.
Okay. Very, very briefly.
Pat Grudy, President.
All right. This is, you can, that's the slide you can delete there, Bryant, actually. Yeah. Okay. So this is an update just to the data we had last month. So in the last month, we've actually seen a lot of progress, at least in terms of the test positivity rate. In Vernon Hills, it's running just over 2%. That's the good news. The other news, the new case rate per 100,000 population Vernon Hills is still running about 71. I'll come back to that in the context of the new CDC guidelines in the last slide here, because I'll show you that that actually is still in the moderate range for case rate. And it is important to emphasize because every once in a while we'll get a note from somebody that says, hey, I just looked at this, the seven day case rate and it's, it's only seven. But what they're not clear on is that seven day case rate metric is the cumulative sum of the last seven days, not the single day on the seventh day. Okay. So sometimes there's some confusion, even I get confused on it sometimes. But right now, 71 would put Vernon Hills in the moderate. So there's two thresholds below that in the new CDC criteria. Okay. There's a, we'll, we'll look at what they actually call them in the last slide. Next slide for Libertyville. Well, actually, this just shows a trending. So you'll, you'll see the top slide is what I showed last month. So we were running about 6%. This month, we're down around 2%. So that's a huge improvement, really in the last month. That's again, really great news. And you're seeing that's a combination of two things. One, the number of cases per day is down, but two, in general, the number of tests per day is up. I think in part, at least that's due to some of the testing we're doing here, although I still haven't been able to completely verify that. But also you're seeing a huge drop really in the number of, in, in the seven day case rate, even just looking at it over the last week, you can see that, you know, it must've been two weeks ago, we had pretty high numbers because it's really come down almost by a factor of two, even in the last seven days. Okay? Those numbers are not tying out exactly just because of really the last day that goes into the calculation. I think the previous table was through 221 and this day it only goes to 220. All right. But really trending in the right direction. Now, having said that, that is really good news. But everything I've read, everything I've heard, everything I believe says the last thing we can do is get overconfident. It is important to remain vigilant. It's important to do all the things that we're doing, not only in our schools, but in our community to keep this transmission rate down. Okay. There are many, many, many examples where not only in, in the United States, but in other countries where people have relaxed rules and gotten complacent. And as the weather warms up and things starting to open up, I'm really concerned that that is true, not to mention UK variants and all the other variables that are out there. But if I could just plead with everybody, just keep doing the good things that you're doing, it really is having an impact. And these are the things that we need to do to open our schools further. Okay. Next slide. So next slide shows Vernon Hills. I mean, they just had, you know, bang up results in the, in the last month. They're actually running just slightly under 2%. And again, the case rate running around 64, which is still in the moderate category. But my projection, do it, go to the next slide. You look at the trending data here and look at the cases per day on the lower list there, we're really running now almost two cases per day. All right. So if you imagine two cases per day times seven days, that's actually going to get us down to a pretty, pretty good number here, I think, if, if this trend continues. So we should be from moderate down to the next level lower at least, I think here within the next week or two. All right. So again, great, great work in the community and it's really having a positive impact, which is what's allowing us to begin conversations to say, now what? Okay. So again, I don't want, you know, all the conversations we're having, I don't want people to think that all we're doing is making excuses because of social distancing and all this kind of stuff. We're absolutely not doing that and we're encouraged by this data. Okay. Next slide. This is the seven day positivity rates. I will tell you, this data to me is somewhat unreliable in the sense that it's just so variable depending on what kind of test you're running, what kind of population you're testing and so on and so forth. The good news is if all other things were equal, we've obviously seen a significant downward trend over the last several months, the last month in particular. So we're currently, these thresholds are the old IDPH thresholds of low, moderate and high risk. So we're currently from a positivity standpoint, operating in the low risk area, which is actually in conflict with the other metric, which is in the CDC moderate risk. That's just kind of the way it is. But again, I think that just reflects the fact that again, the more asymptomatic people you test, the lower the positivity rate is going to be. So this metric is really just kind of a mix of factors, including again, the test type you run, the type of population you're testing and, and all those good things. But better that the net numbers are going down than going up is what I would say. All right. Next page. This just shows hospitalizations, no significant trend. It's running, it's pretty stable. No, nothing really here to be alerted to. I guess it's down slightly, which is consistent, I think, with what we heard in the public comment today. But I, I think generally speaking, within our immediate area or within region nine, this is region nine data, which includes Lake County and McHenry. Things are in pretty good shape. And again, this is just a different, this is the IDPH data on the case rates. The other data was from the Northwestern database, very consistent. And again, really just at the very, very low end of what was historically called the hybrid learning mode. Lake County no longer on the school's dashboard publishes it as such. All right. But I left those old thresholds up there just for comparison purposes. And it's really just at that border between hybrid and in person. So again, very favorable trend, incredible improvement since the month of December. Next slide, I think next slide shows Vernon Hills, basically same trend, same conclusion. Next slide. And this actually shows again, the new CDC benchmarks essentially. So they've now, they've now defined this community transmission thing. So again, remember what they say, they say, hey, it's okay to open schools as long as you can do it safely and as long as community transmission is at a, at a low level. And so they've came, come up with this red, orange, yellow and blue color scheme. All right. And the thresholds are indicated, if it's more than 100, it's high. If it's between 50 and 99, it's substantial. I think I said moderate, I meant substantial. If it's between 10 and 49, it's moderate. And if it's between zero and nine, it's low. Okay. So in both communities right now, we are in that orange block. So that's in the 50 to 99. But I think moving, you know, quite diligently into the moderate transmission level, which would be, I think, a great thing for the community as we continue to get there. All right. So that's all I have on, on the metrics.
Yeah. Could you, you comment, could you comment a little bit? We've had these discussions at, at, at board meetings and then you and I have certainly talked about this as well. We're often asked now, so what metrics are going to be our decision making point? Can you talk about, you know, metrics and in kind of how we've used metrics and how that would possibly factor into decision making?
Yeah. So, you know, first comment I'll make, we have avoided being locked into any particular metrics. And, and I know as I've read around in some other districts, frankly speaking, they've kind of tied their hands in some cases because they've committed to taking certain actions depending on achieving certain levels of, say, test positivity rate or incidence rates. Frankly, only to find that they usually can't get there and therefore they can't make a decision, let's say, to open up more. All right. And so I think even a lot of schools that have done that have kind of changed their mind. All right. So we avoided that from the beginning. And I think we're using these metrics more as information and guidance to help us in making our decisions. All right. Now, the other thing I would tell you is I believe we are one of the more fortunate districts and that we now have data on our own population. We have data on Libertyville High School. We have, we have data on Vernon Hills High School. All right. And we can aggregate that data, obviously, and talk about we have data for our district. All right. So we are no longer solely or completely reliant on what's happening in Lake County, what's happening in region nine, what's even happening in Libertyville and Vernon Hills. Okay. So that's given us a whole new window, frankly, for which there are no metrics established, but it's given us a whole new window to be able to understand what's going on in our buildings and what risks, what risk and or opportunities does that present? My own read of the testing data so far from our own two high schools is yes, we are finding cases. Okay. And that is a good thing. But the good news is we are not finding a lot of cases. Okay. And so I think that again is one of the things that is in, in some respects, inspiring us to have further conversations on what our next steps can be and when we can take them. And again, I'll just use this as an opportunity to say, although we have data, we still only have data on 65% of our population. Okay. And I think we had always said, so that someone doesn't accuse us of moving the bar here, we have always said we wanted to get data on at least 80% of our population. And I believe we still need to strive for that, if not higher. All right. I mean, I think we had good reports from the students today. The testing is easy, it's quick. And I, I think they've been incredibly supportive. And the problem with only having 65% is I, I don't know which 65% we have. I don't know if we have the representative 65% or we have the good 65% or, or, or what? Okay. Because I still don't understand why the other 35% haven't signed up. All right. And so I just want to continue to encourage the community, you know, one, if you are signed up to test, continue to get tested. All right. So Diego's suggestion, of course, was set your alarm. So you don't miss it. And then the other thing is I'll, I'll ask again, and, and if you're a parent or a student in the community and you're not signed out to, up to get tested, we really want to continue to encourage you to get tested. Okay. You know, if you've already had COVID, I mean, I guess we should probably consider how to factor that into our assessment. But I honestly think with the antigen testing, the chance of false positive, say, two weeks after you've actually been exposed, is probably pretty low. And even though you may not get sick, you could still spread. But you know, we're more than willing to take a look at that. I, I just, I gotta be honest, I don't think that's a significant mover in our numbers. I mean, we can look at how many cases we've had so far year to date. It's, it's in the tens of cases, not in the hundreds of cases. So, you know, if we're at 65%, that's not going to move us up to 75% if we take all those COVID cases into account. Okay. But certainly we can do that. All right. But it's been really helpful. I think our data is clearly moving in the, in a favorable direction. And, and again, I'm, I'm encouraged and I look forward to our discussions here over the next couple of weeks to see what else we can do.
Prentice Lee Superintendent.
Okay. Anything else on that part? Okay. We talked a little bit, we just like to update folks somewhere we're at. John's reporting that Vernon Hills is up to about 33%. That's a jump up from, I think we were kind of down to 25 at one point.
We had had a somewhat significant dip. We were probably down in the low twenties. But with this latest ask, and then like I said, this group D group, we're back up to 33%.
And then again, Tom, Tom is somewhere, you know, 60, between 65 and 70, depending on, you know, where we're at now every two weeks. So that gives you an idea.
Can I just ask a quick question on that? And so when we posed this to the families, to the students, would you like to come in during hybrid? We didn't have a cap. We didn't turn students away.
Correct.
We accept any student that wanted to come into the building. So anyone that, that says we don't want all our kids in the building, that's not true because we've offered that opportunity to every student in this district to come in the building to learn. So I just wanted to, it seems like that question hasn't come up or that comment has, I just wanted to be clear that we didn't turn anyone away. Anyone that wants to come into hybrid had the opportunity to, to sign up.
In fact, Jim, to take that a little further, we're providing options prior to each progress report for the next progress report for people to opt in to the system. So, and there is a whole line of communication that goes with that. We send that out to people. There, you know, people are aware of that, John and Tom, you know, touch base with the kids. So yes, there, there are still opportunities to certainly do that. Okay.
I thought I heard, and maybe I heard it incorrectly, but I thought I heard Dr. G was encouraging the seniors to come, come back. Is that, did I hear that in the student report?
Yeah. We just, we just had the senior webinar. I made a strong push and, you know, I talked to my board reps who are, I think, still on here. They're, they're pretty confident that we're going to get a, a good rush of seniors come that week after spring break there when we get kids back. So I'm hopeful.
But conversely to that, when I associate, the Illinois State Board of Education has required us to provide the option for students to stay home. We cannot force students to come into the building. So that's on the other end of the spectrum. So we, everyone's got that option.
Yeah, that, that's true. And again, you know, when you look at us in totality, we're pretty close to 50/50 for people wanting the choice. So even if the state didn't make us, our community is telling us they, they value having choice to either choose to send their kids back to school or to have them learn remotely, at least right now.
Yeah. So I guess my point is every student, every parent has the choice to have their student learning in school, that we're not making that choice for them. And we're not putting any boundaries around that to, to allow or not allow that to happen.
That's an, that's an accurate statement, Jim. Okay. John, we, we've spent a lot of time, we had a good reports from students of less, John and Tom have something specifically they want to add under hybrid learning overview. I think, you know, we've probably touched, probably covered that for tonight. Health and safety, so weekly recurrent by next, our Abbott by next now testing, we've also talked about that a little bit again. And that is open to any staff member and it's still open to any student. They can still sign up for that. It is no cost to the student or the staff members. Our aggregate staff right now is probably running about 85%. We're still about 65% on students, but over the last couple of weeks, an interesting dynamic. So students that are student athletes that are learning remotely right now, so they're not in the building. Right? So they're coming in and they're being tested. And if you think about student athletics, and Kevin can certainly relate to this, where his daughter and son may be spending, I don't know, Kevin, three hours a day, sometimes four hours a day in the building, they're now being tested as well. So if we look at adding them in to kids that are being tested, who are spending time in the building, then our numbers go up in the low seventies. Those numbers will increase with student athletics in the spring because the numbers of sports and the numbers of kids in those sports are going to be higher. So we still need to push, we still need to encourage, appreciate John and Tom doing that at the building level. But the number of kids who are actually in our building for two hours or more a week, the numbers have gone up in terms of testing because we're requiring kids in athletics and extra, larger extracurriculars to, to be tested.
And just to clarify, because I know some people are not covering this, your 65% number is 65% of the 35% in Vernon Hills and 65% of the 70% in Vernon Hills. It's not 65% of the total. But to your point, total people in the building were probably a little better than that when you take the athletics and extracurriculars.
Okay. Next is educator vaccination overview. Again, just to keep the board updated and the community, we had our third week of invitations go out for educators to be vaccinated either at Round Lake High School and/or Stevenson High School. That is a partnership program between the Lake County Superintendents and the Lake County Health Department, who's been, Mark Fister and his team have been phenomenal to work with. We're the envy of other counties in the Chicago area and the state for that partnership that we have. So again, they matched a number of invitations to make appointments with the amount of vaccine that they received a week before from, you know, the federal government. And they will do as many appointments as they get vaccination. So we're pushing through that. Hopefully two or three weeks, we'll get everybody that wants to be vaccinated through that first round. And then they'll start the second round. We have to wait the 28 days, just like everybody else. And then they'll start that second round. So we're hoping, you know, by the end of March and April, early April, that, you know, perhaps we'll be well. So we're hoping, you know, by the end of March and April, early April, that, you know, perhaps we'll be well um, on our way. But I think it's certainly a confidence booster for anybody that's working in a school, even if you got your first vaccination. Uh, and I think the staff overall was just ecstatic to get started, of course, uh, with the program. So we are still encouraging, we being the superintendents in the county, we're still encouraging people. If you can get vaccinated someplace else, by all means do it because that opens up a vaccination for somebody who can't find a place to be um, vaccinated. So, uh, again, that's part of mitigation, testing the students and vaccination as part of that conversation about looking at, um, you know, providing more opportunities for kids to come in for a longer period of times.
Do we have any idea how long it will take for all of our teachers that want vaccines to get vaccines?
I, I think, I think, Dom, we're probably looking at, you know, probably early to mid-April, I think. That, that are going through the, the Lake County, you know, program.
Great.
So again, if, if we are fortunate, I mean, we, society, not just us. Um, if we get fortunate and the pipeline of vaccines becomes better and is more prevalent, uh, the vaccination teams, as Executive Director Fister explains it, as they continue to vaccinate, they will become more efficient. So where they might be able to do, I don't know what the number is, you know, ten vaccinations an hour, they can do fourteen vaccinations an hour. So as long as they're getting vaccine in, as the vaccine, uh, the vaccination teams become more effective in terms of what they're doing, they're going to be able to crank more vaccinations out per hour uh, at both the sites, which will mean will be done earlier than, than later. We meet, um, on most weeks, a couple of times a week, sometimes three times a week. But generally we meet once a week with Executive Director Fister, uh, and his staff, the Lake County Health Department, Lake County Superintendents. Uh, and, uh, we get, you know, uh, really a very current update on where we're at with vaccination. You know, what they're getting in every week, and it, it's varied a little bit every week, of course. Uh, but if we can get that pipeline smoothed out, you know, from the federal government to just, you know, distribution and then vaccination centers, we'll be able to do more and get people, and then they can move on to the next group, which would be great, right? Okay. So, uh, transportation, uh, Dan, I don't think there's anything more to add there. Uh, the, the buses are working well. We're doing, you know, multiple bus runs during the day, uh, because, uh, we're running a modified block schedule and half days. Um, so appreciate the work that, uh, Dan and the buildings have done on that. And the bus companies, you know, they've delivered and they've been great. So we appreciate, uh, their flexibility. Dan, anything you want to add tonight on COVID nineteen tracking, uh, expenditure tracking at this point?
Uh, yeah, I, so kind of realizing the detail page we had is starting to get too many details on there. So it's just going to be a bit overwhelming to read. So, um, I kind of put together a summary report to kind of summarize stuff for you. So this is the report I'm going to be using, but if you want more detail, I'm happy to include it, but it's probably just going to be overwhelming. Um, but this is interesting because, you know, this report as of Friday uh, is already out of date because we just got more bills for testing. Uh, so, so far we're at about a hundred and forty thousand on testing um, that we've been invoiced for. And so this, this, this accounts for almost all of that, except for about twenty grand. So there's a, there's a sheet in here that starts with, you know, we had in our original budget, half a million dollars, five hundred thousand for just COVID expenses. Not totally sure what we were going to incur. Um, we since had transferred, I transferred some more money into that account um, due to some supplies and stuff like that. And really, when you look at what we spent, meaning checks we've cut, encumbered, meaning purchase orders that are open, not yet paid. And then there's a batch number that means stuff that was in the system, ready to get paid out as a check, but just hasn't gotten finalized yet. Um, there's a hundred and fifty dollars left of the five hundred and seventy-three thousand I've got in there. So take the twenty grand in invoices we just got today, we are now negative on the twenty grand. So that'll just keep getting negative as we keep going along. So which, you know, we're gonna have to, we're, we're gonna keep an eye on, uh, for sure. So in, in my financial report, it has a kind of a mini review stuff, but, um, there's a few expenditures that we're just gonna have to keep watching. It's this one. Uh, and also, um, the LHS, uh, Field House, you're right, when we adopted the budget, we didn't plan on spending any money on that. So like, I've got to kind of watch that as total. So I'm going to keep watching. Our total expenditures, I think, will be okay. We have a lot of areas across this district that, um, are under. But, um, this is something that's going to continue to be over and over as we go. So I don't think we would be in a position that we would need an amended budget. Um, but I'm just going to keep watching that for you. So it's just kind of like, you feel like, you know, we spent money upfront. Now we waited a long time, didn't spend a lot. Now we're going to start spending a whole lot more fast. And so we're having that all across the district. Transportation, like you said, you know, we used to run fifty routes a day. Now we're running ninety-six routes a day. Uh, so we're starting to spend the money a lot faster.
Okay, um, go ahead, Pat. I'm sorry.
Can I back up to the vaccine thing? Just, just a, a question. Um, I don't think we've talked about this specifically, but you know, when I think about it, we have two hundred and eighty teachers roughly, right? And some fraction of them, maybe it's a third, maybe it's a half, have already received their first shot, right? So we're looking at somewhere between, you know, one and three hundred shots and we're like done. Right? And we're thinking maybe that doesn't get to April. Is that, is that because we can't get a hundred shots or we just can't get it scheduled? Because, and where I'm going with that is, are there any way we could do a deal with Mark Fister to say, Mark, give us a hundred and fifty or two hundred shots? We'll get out of your way and we'll work with Passport Health to get this thing done and over with.
Uh, the answer is no. They're not providing vaccine outside the network.
That's, I think that's a mistake.
Even the groups. And Pat, the number, the number we really want to be thinking about is four eighty, not just teachers, because we have four hundred and eighty employees that would be around kids, right? So whatever the, whatever the percentage was, the number would be a little bit higher. But you could imagine that every school district in Lake County would be in the same position, right? Because their teachers scheduled and have gone over. So every district would want to cut its own personal deal with you know, Lake County Health Department. So yeah, that, the vaccine that they're getting is designated specifically for that vaccination program. Uh, there are, uh, third-party companies, um, that have sought to do a bargain, let's say with Lake County Health Department, and they've said, no, we're not going to release that vaccine. Any vaccine we get is going right to the educator vaccination program.
All right. Good. I mean, I, I think it's still kind of misfiring in terms of priorities. There's people out in the community getting vaccinated that are and by every definition I've run, I've read, less essential than a teacher or somebody that works in a school building. And I just wish there was a way that we could do that. Okay.
I, I can't quantify this, but I can tell you that we've got some number of staff members and John and Tom, you know, I think would say yes to to that, who found ways to get vaccinated before we even started. If you can find those places, go, you know, your local Walgreens is vaccinating people coming in off the street, by all means.
It just seems like such a manageable problem and, and a small number. Most of the people I talk to, their problem is I can't get an appointment. I can't get an appointment now. If they can't get an appointment because there's no vaccine, I guess there's no, no way to solve that.
Our, our best sense is it's a supply issue, but, but we've really had a lot of, like, I, I will say as someone who like also lives in a different state and a different county, like the system in this county is really impressive. There are a lot of educators already vaccinated here because of that, and it's going to keep running. And I mean, in a few weeks, you're going to have a, a ton more people in it.
And we haven't heard from, I haven't heard from anyone, and they tend to email me or Bryant or both of us. But I haven't heard from anyone who can't get an appointment. I mean, anybody that's wanted to get in when the email comes out for next week, like on Sunday, nobody's had, like, I can't find an appointment between Stevenson and Round Lake, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Has the county indicated how many educators have gotten vaccinated so far in the county?
Jim, I, I couldn't tell you. I, I, you know, it'd be such a wild guess on my part. Yeah. So, uh, okay, um, the, uh, only, uh, last thing, I know we've spent a lot of time and it's important time on this. So, um, there is a, a chance, uh, Pat, to you, to your, you know, kind of community working on this. There's a chance, I know Dist- District Seventy, Superintendent's talked to me about our testing program. And District Seventy-three, Hawthorne Seventy-three in Vernon Hills, uh, reached out to me today just to ask some questions about the program. So there's an outside chance that they may do some of their version of testing as well. And we'll have a mutt, you know, again, we'll have a better understanding of kind of what our profile looks like, at least in our two school communities. Uh, and the contributions to that. So, um, okay. And, um, I think that's it. So, um, moving on to FOIA requests. So, uh, thank you. Oh, one, one closing thing. So let me, let me repeat two key points. So just like when you're, you know, communicated to begin, key points, middle and end. So this, these are the ending. So again, our default planning is for a regular opening of school next year. We're continuing to look at possibilities, okay, working with all the factors that we discussed tonight, at possibilities of expanding options, uh, for, um, you know, some kids to be able to come in uh, to the building longer periods of time. And Will, can you continue discussions with the board? Uh, and what I'd like to do later next week, or even the following week, uh, is, uh, set up the, uh, special meeting that Kevin talked about. Uh, we come back and talk about this in a little bit more detail. We're going to, uh, have more conversation about, uh, all this at District Leader, uh, Leadership Team tomorrow. Uh, and, uh, we can talk about some of those dynamics and, and, um, some of the things that we uh, might recommend, um, uh, to meet those dynamics. Okay?
Can we do it next week, you think?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I think it, it might have to be later in the week, next week, but that would be okay. All right. Okay. Based on your schedules, of course, that's why I said, you know, next week or early the following. So I'll reach out to the board and of course we would publicize that meeting. Okay? All right. We good? Okay. Um, so we had, um, ten FOIA requests since our last meeting. Uh, so, um, as required, I need to read these into the record. So we received a FOIA request on one twenty-two, twenty-one. Response deadline was one twenty-nine, twenty-one. The requester, Bernadette Soto, uh, Chicago Regional Council of Carpenters in Chicago, requested a list of all schools that Anderson Locke performed work on in CHSD one twenty-eight for, uh, FY two thousand nine. Dan Stanley did the follow-up and we refilled, uh, fulfilled the request on one twenty-five, twenty-one. Uh, FOIA request received one twenty-five, twenty-one. Response deadline to one twenty-one. Requester, Seamus Quinn, Construction Analyst, Indiana, Illinois, Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. Information requested the following information regarding the following project. The demolition of structures bid out on eleven, five, twenty-one. Copies of any records of payment, requests for payment, waivers of lien, certified payrolls from the start of the project to the present. Two, copies of any records of progress notes and any correspondence with Fowler Enterprises LLC. Three, a copy of the signed contract between the district and Fowler Enterprises LLC. Follow-up was done by Bryant Kelly. The request was fulfilled and sent on one twenty-nine, twenty-one. FOIA request received one twenty-five, twenty-one. Response deadline to one twenty-one. Requester, Bernadette Soto, Chicago Regional Council of Carpenters. Information requested any and all certified payroll records for contractor Anderson Locke for work performed uh, on and in Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School for FY two thousand nineteen. Follow-up, Dan Stanley. Uh, no responsive records. Response sent, uh, one twenty-one, uh, one twenty-nine, twenty-one. Uh, FOIA request received one twenty-eight, twenty-one. Response deadline to four, twenty-one. Requester, Joe Sutton. Uh, information requested the district current website and or content management system, CMS, provider contract, current alerts and or emergency notification provider contract, current mobile app provider contract, current learning management system provider contract. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley. Mick Torres, uh, was fulfilled and response sent on two, one, twenty-one. FOIA request received to two, twenty-one. Response deadline to nine, twenty-one. Requester, Jason Roman. Uh, information requested an electronic list of all current employee staff contact information for Adams Spec School District one twenty-eight. Um, if the information is available on your website, please let us know where and we will obtain it from there. The information we are requesting is each employee's first name, last name, title, department, direct phone, cell phone, email address and office address. Follow-up is done by Dan Stanley. Uh, no responsive records. Response sent to, uh, three, twenty-one. FOIA request received two, two, twenty-one. Response deadline to nine, twenty-one. Requester, Nathan Mahalik, Illinois Retired Teachers Association. Information requested, please provide the name and email address of any certified staff, teachers, administrators, nurses, counselors, et cetera, who are retiring this year. Follow-up was done by Bryant Kelly, uh, fulfilled and, uh, sent on two, three, uh, twenty-one. Uh, FOIA request received two, three, twenty-one. Response deadline to ten, twenty-one. Requester, Betty Liberalis, Deerfield High School Salary Committee. Information requested the following information from all of your schools, districts, administrative assistants that are assigned to work as department chair administrative assistants or listed as ten-month administrative assistants, twelve-month administrative assistants. Information requested, one, position or title, department chair, AA, ten-month, twelve-month, et cetera. Two, hours worked per year. And three, starting salary. Follow-up was done by Bryant Kelly, uh, fulfilled and sent on two, five, twenty-one. Commercial FOIA request received on two, eight, twenty-one. Response deadline was three, ten, twenty-one. From Preston, Dede, from Chicagoland Construction. Um, information requested bid results, tabulations or award for two thousand two, uh, twenty, twenty-one, Community High School District Number One Twenty-Eight, two thousand twenty-one Mason remediation at Libertyville High School in Lake County. Project four oh oh seven, two eight oh, uh, two thousand two, twenty-one, Community High School District One Twenty-eight. Excuse me, uh, two thousand twenty-one Masony, Masonry remediation at Vernon Hills High School and project number four zero zero seven, two nine. Uh, follow-up, Dan Stanley, fulfilled and response sent on two, sixteen, twenty-one. Two more to go. We're almost there. Uh, FOIA request received two, eight, twenty-one. Response deadline to sixteen, twenty-one. Requester, Jonas, Jonathan P., um, Fag, F A G G, A B C seven. Um, request or breakdown of attendance rates by schools specify whether the attendance was in person or remote and how attendance is being tracked. If both in-person and remote learning have occurred, please provide disinformation for both. Please provide information from the start of the current year until the most current date available in production, upon production. Uh, uh, follow-up is done by Bryant Kelly, uh, fulfilled and response sent to twelve, twenty-one. And this is the last one. FOIA request received to eleven, twenty-one. Response deadline to nineteen, twenty-one. Requesters, Jennifer Smith Richards from the Chicago Tribune and Jody S. Cohen from ProPublica. Uh, information requested records that show all incidences that included referral to law enforcement and the underlying offense during two thousand eighteen, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty and two thousand twenty, twenty-one school years that did not result in arrest. Records that show all arrests of students made inside the school district and the underlying offense during the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty and two thousand twenty, twenty-one school years. Records that show the gender and race of students referred, uh, to law enforcement, arrested and or issued a citation or ticket in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty, twenty-one school years. Records that show all incidents in which students were issued a citation or ticket for an ordinance violation during two thousand eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty, twenty-one school years. Follow-up was done by Bryant Kelly. No responsive records. Response sent, uh, to nineteen, twenty-one. And for Bryant or Dan, just explain for the community what no responsive records means. So they understand that.
A lot of people think FOIA request for information, like you just want to get some information. Technically, a FOIA is a request for records. So you just be, we may not have records of information. So, for example, these arrest records or whatever, like if we don't keep them, I can't give you something I don't have. Or like they're requesting contacts for individuals for a school district that's not us. Like I don't have any responsive records. That just means we don't have anything. Um, so, yeah. And I, and I know, I mean, look at this list, like it looks like very busy month, Bryant and I, he had about five, but Carol had ten. So major kudos to Carol for help keeping us organized with this. This is the biggest month in FOIAs that I remember having. So that was a, a big deal. So we just kept thinking like, wow, there's another one. Wow, there's another one. So, yeah.
Okay, Pat.
Good job. Thank you. All right. Consent vote agenda is listed. We reviewed it two weeks ago. Um, can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
Oh, sure. Certainly. Uh, students, if you're still here, you're, uh, obviously welcome to stay, but if you want to access age right or left, you can certainly do that. We forgot to remind you of that earlier.
Thank you.
I moved to, uh,
Thank you for everything. Have a great night.
Thanks, guys.
Any discussion?
Hey, uh, yeah, Pat, only, well, kudos to Dan. Thanks for the, kind of the mid-year comprehensive assessment of line items. Very, very well done, uh, very informative. So thanks for doing that for this, this go around.
Casey Rooney School Board.
Thank you. Now, I, I think it's important to note that we do spend a tremendous amount of time on this stuff in our committee meetings. Um, I know that, and I'm thrilled with the amount of public attendance we've been getting at our meetings. But, um, committee meetings are where, really where the, the nitty-gritty work gets done. And we really, really drill down on some of this stuff. So there's a lot on this consent vote agenda. That was probably, what, maybe an hour, hour and there's a lot on this consent vote agenda. That was probably what, maybe an hour, hour and fifteen minutes of discussion at that meeting. So just for what it's worth.
Yeah, and I'm just going to divert. Yeah, go ahead. No, I won't do it. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Hess, Hassel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. My other that I was going to mention is I think we have learned a lot about how much more participation we're getting in our meetings with our Zoom protocols. I think there's some lessons for us to learn post COVID with respect to how we can increase exposure. So okay, program and personnel committee, Chairperson Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Grudy. First up is a first reading for a new board policy. First, I'd just like to comment, we, we went over this in committee the other, other day, but how impressive this policy is. It's a probably one of the more lengthy policies that I've seen and the, its title is racial equity, diversity and inclusion. And really contains a great deal of, of information. It contains a significant number of commitments, reporting metrics. It really sets, sort of guides us as to how to move forward with this, with this topic and aligns with our daring mission and really clearly spells that out. So I don't know if there's any other.
Thank you, Jim. I would like to share a little bit of background about the racial equity policy before the first reading. To commit our entire school community to shared equity beliefs and commitments, the D one twenty-eight racial equity, diversity and inclusion policy was written by a representative group of stakeholders and is presented tonight for first reading. I would like to share the brief, a brief overview of the policy development process. And it's really important to start with the why. Why develop and adopt a board policy focused on racial equity? Members of the D one twenty-eight community have focused on understanding and ensuring racial equity, diversity and inclusion and professional learning and systemic practices over a number of years. D one twenty-eight Equity Coordinators Amy Christian, Ann Singleton and Tara Young have been leading and supporting these efforts since assuming the Equity Coordinator roles created in the spring of two thousand nineteen. They join us in tonight's meeting and we welcome them to be part of this conversation. D one twenty-eight is committed to mission-driven equity and inclusion goals and actions at every level of our organization. D one twenty-eight does not currently have a policy that focuses on racial equity. Racial equity, diversity and inclusion are embedded in our daring mission. The mission applies to all students in all classrooms. To fulfill the mission, we are committed to ensuring equity of access. Every individual in our system deserves access to all facets of our school. Equity of outcomes, ensuring every student's education generates high levels of learning for all students. Systemic accountability. We frequently review and analyze our impact. We disaggregate data and examine outcomes. In addition, the Illinois State Board of Education is also committed to equity. Its two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three strategic plan identifies their intent to monitor Illinois school districts using an Equity Journey Continuum that is set to be released, piloted and then reported on each district's two thousand twenty-two state report card. Next, the how. How was the policy written? A stakeholder team was convened in January. The team included thirty-two participants representing students, parents, educational support personnel, educators, administrators, community members and two D one twenty-eight board members. Across eight meetings in January and February, members of the team reviewed sample policies from other districts, suggested unique D one twenty-eight language, engaged in breakout groups and hold group discussions and utilized very spoken and written feedback mechanisms to develop and revise drafts of the policy. The writing team strove to represent all stakeholder group members' voices as well as their language suggestions. Policy has been reviewed by the D one twenty-eight attorney, shared with all administrators and staff, reviewed by the board at the February eighth Program and Personnel Committee meeting and is presented for first reading tonight. Finally, the what. What does the policy include? In the policy introduction, the difference between equality and equity is explained. The D one twenty-eight daring mission is acknowledged and recognized that it calls on all of us to recognize the dignity and potential of all members of the school community and to ensure that students explore and discover personal journeys to meaningful post-secondary pursuits. Furthermore, it commits the District one twenty-eight community to the advancement of the foundational principles of liberty, civil rights and justice for all. Next, the policy articulates D one twenty-eight's shared beliefs, recognizing the moral imperative of preparing all students for full participation in a globalized multicultural society. In order to fulfill the stated beliefs, the policy identifies commitments, measurement metrics to monitor actions and outcomes and reporting structures to document successes, areas of focus and progress on our equity goals.
Jim Batson VP.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any other comments? We don't have to take action on this tonight. Well, this will be on the agenda for committee meeting next month and for final adoption at the March board meeting. So
thank you, Dr. Fisher. We had very substantial, as you pointed out, I think we had very substantial discussion on this at the PNP meeting.
And to my earlier point about Zoom and meetings, I think we actually even had more than normal community feedback on this in the last two weeks really because we were able to get some people on line here.
It's, it's a great policy and I thank the team for putting this together. Moving on, we have a board union tentative agreements we have to act on and these were discussed at committee earlier in the morning.
Grandly Superintendent.
Bryant, do you want to comment or do you want me to? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, as, as part of the process of opening school this year, we were required to do impact bargaining with the teachers' union in the district. We can, we completed that. It sometimes just takes a while to work through the process, you know, on the union's end and for us to bring it to you. But we shared these with the board earlier and we're in a position to just sign off on what we agreed to last fall. So it's just in writing. We've been doing all of these things anyway. It's just recorded finally in writing for signature.
Okay.
So we, obviously we would, obviously we would recommend approval of the tentative agreements. Sorry, I almost left that out, Casey.
Can I have a motion? A second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions by the board? Okay, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Again, just a quick shout out before we move on on that. I want to thank Pat and Lisa and Kevin Huber for their work with the administrative team and the collective bargaining process. It's a lot of time involved in that. Lot of patience on both sides of the table and we appreciate their work with us.
Thank you. Yes, thank you all. And last but not least, a few additional employment of employees items here that didn't make it onto the consent agenda. So if we can have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions on these? No hearing none. Roll call, please.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes and unless somebody has something other for personnel, program and personnel, that concludes our program and personnel committee.
Okay, next, Facilities and Finance Committee. Kevin, do you want to take that? Do you want me to do it?
I can do it, Pat, since I was able to join tonight. So thanks. Dan, 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 you want to go over A, the resolution for the four point six in working cash and what that resolution is really briefly. We've talked about this at a couple of meetings now. So we just approve it tonight.
Yeah, I'll talk about it in concept and then actually Pat has some things that he has to say as part of this process.
Okay.
So essentially is always been our intent to, again, not increase the community's tax burden to pay for these capital projects that we've been doing fifty-two million dollars between the two and looking at the LHS Field House as well, which is around another eight million. One of those methods of pain is using our fund balance for that. One of our funds, we have several funds. One of them is the debt service fund and that one has about four point six million of ending balance and with nothing to, nothing to use it for. And so that money was originally the interest that accrued over a long period of time and a few or a a few loss and costs. So in terms of when they, when they levy the money to pay for old bonds that that were outstanding. So there's, there's this money left over and really the best way to get that money out is you have to issue debt and then pay for that, pay for that debt issuance, the, you know, do your, your bond payment out of those funds. So we can, that's the way, so we can't just simply just transfer the money from one to, one fund to another. In this case, as we've done throughout many fund transfers over the few years doing this. So we are issuing four point six million of working cash bonds for thirty days. So this is not any kind of long-term debt at all. This is really the only way we can do that. So we're going to issue it for thirty days. It's going to cost us around twenty-seven thousand to issue that debt and about a little over a thousand dollars of interest for those thirty days. And this is really that, that process. So we start with the resolution of intent by the board tonight. In March, there is a hearing and then April would be the issuance of that debt. And so then we'll have everything and the schedules kind of set up so that everything is kind of buttoned up by the end of the fiscal year that the money has been properly placed in the right fund. This debt is paid off, that fund balance is zeroed out. And so we have that set. So that's just an overall thing. It might look weird to issue debt because we've been debt-free and we don't really need to incur that. This is really an accounting thing that we have to do to legally transfer the money into the right accounts to pay for these capital projects. So. Okay. All right. So due to the pandemic, we must limit the number of members of the public to ten in this room, that is. However, public access to view the meeting live was provided. In view of the current financial condition of the district, the Board of Education will consider the adoption of a resolution declaring its intention to issue four million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollar working cash fund bonds pursuant to Article twenty of the school code and directing that notice of such attention, intention be published. Casey, you want to read the resolution?
Resolution declaring the intention to issue four million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars working cash fund bonds of Community High School District number one twenty-eight, Lake County, Illinois, for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of said school district and directing that notice of such intention be published in the manner provided by law.
Kevin Huber School Board.
Back to you, Kevin.
Okay. Do we have any other questions of Dan or the process that we're going through right now? Again, as Dan alluded to, it's a lot of it's governmental accounting required because of funds and things of that nature. All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the resolution and accompanying documents as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, other questions, comments? All right, seeing none. Carol, you want to call it?
Hassel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you for that.
Do you mind, do you mind, Pat? Do you, can you mind just affirming that it does it well? Yes. So the motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. Sorry about that, Kevin.
Nope, all good. None. Follow the process. So we can't get in trouble. Let's do some masonry restoration work. So Vernon Hills, Libertyville, Dan, Mark.
Thank you. We went over these projects in committee. So looking for the board to make a motion to accept a bid from Safeway Tuck Pointing Company for the base bid of a hundred and nine thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty-one masonry remediation work at Libertyville High School.
So moved.
Second.
Kevin Huber School Board.
Kevin, you're muted if you're talking.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, no, thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Jim, for making a second and comments on that, anybody?
No, I think I made this comment in the committee meeting, but these, the masonry work and things that we do over the summer, we, we do these maintenance projects every year. It's kind of akin to what you have to do in your house to make sure you keep things up. Otherwise it gets a lot more expensive if you don't take care of things when they need to be taken care of and you know, if you look at our history, we have a, a good history of maintaining particular, particularly our aging asset in Libertyville High School. But these are the, these are the things that we need to do and I'm glad we're on top of them.
Thank you, Casey. All right, Mark. Anything else you want to add on this one before Carol calls it? You okay with this one? One oh nine, right?
Yeah, one hundred and nine thousand dollars, yes.
This is Libertyville. Okay, Carol.
Huber.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Okay, I think we are good to go on now. And now we're going to move over to some masonry work at Vernon Hills. A little bit more money, Mark. You want to kind of maybe just tell why the, it's about four times as much over there?
Yeah, the scope of work for Vernon Hills High School is a lot larger. We put off the, the work knowing that we are doing the additions. So we have the whole east side of the building to work on the masonry east side and in the south east corner of the building. So it's a large space. This is our fourth round at I believe it's our fourth round here doing masonry work at Vernon Hills High School. And obviously the building is over twenty years old and we're just trying to keep it up. So looking for the board to make a motion to accept the base bid from A one group LTD for the base bid amount of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Eight hundred.
In eight, it, it, right, in eight hundred, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars for the two thousand twenty-one masonry restoration work at Vernon Hills High School. A little background, we had eighteen contractors come to pre-bid, receive twelve bid. Our parent low bidder on this project withdrew their bid because they missed some calculations in their bid. So A one group was then the next lowest bidder.
All right. So can we have a motion to approve the low-cost bid for Vernon Hills masonry work of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars going to A one group?
Please prove the bid as described.
As described. Thanks, Don.
Second.
Thanks, Lisa. Other comments, questions? Okay. Carol.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Grudy.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Now, Mark, I think you're still up. Some loaders, tractors, some power equipment we need. Yes?
Yes, thanks, Kevin. We're looking to approve the purchase of two new tractors, one for Vernon Hills and one for Libertyville. They are multi-purpose tractor, fully enclosed cab, four-wheel drive with a loader bucket on them. We'll be able to use them in the summer for pulling our large gang lawn mowers. And in the winter, we'll also be using them to assist at snow removal and loading salt into the truck at, at Libertyville High School where we, we keep our salt. So both schools go over there. Presently, we don't have any enclosed equipment to do any of the loading or move snow, heavy snow like that. So this is a fully weathered, uh, uh, equipment that's been needed for a long time. So this is a Sourcewell contract pricing, which is a national bid bid pricing off a contract from Sourcewell number one one zero seven one nine C and H. Does it discounted pricing off a contract from Sourcewell number one one zero seven one nine C and H? Is it discounted price of the tractor with all the equipment involved in the base price is forty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy cents? Then there's some tire upgrades, we need to change tires out for turf. And there's freight and delivery. They did a mathematical error in their total number. So it's off by twenty dollars in our favor for each tractor. So they are going to honor that, honor that pricing. So each tractor will cost fifty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy cents. So total price for both tractors, one hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and forty cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thanks, Jim. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Don. Questions? My, yeah, my only question, Mark, Mark, how long are, how long will these assets last for us? Decades?
Asset should last twenty years.
Twenty years, so. And Dan, what do we depreciate this thing? How many years would you depreciate this thing over?
Off the top of my head, I have no idea.
Okay. So again, it's a, sounds like a lot of money, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, but it's getting us over twenty years, so very, very small capital investment.
Do we have similar assets at Libertyville?
Pardon me?
Do we have the same, are these both for Vernon Hills?
No, one's for Vernon Hills, one's for Libertyville.
Thank you.
Yeah.
John and I drive the tractors?
Nope.
No, only, only after Kevin drives first.
They're joystick-driven.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, Carol, you want to call it?
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
So motion carries. And then we have disposal of equipment. Do we have to make a motion to dispose of something that's small? I see double asterisk on there.
Yeah, we, we typically have a process for getting rid of stuff unless it has diminutive value. And apparently, this has slightly above diminutive value, so.
Fair enough. So do you have a motion to approve the disposal of equipment as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. Comments on this? All right, Carol.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
All right, so I, is there any other for finance, anybody?
Just, just one note on the disposals. With this also helps us accounting purposes. So when we look at our disposal list, we also reference what is approved. So this is also part of our accounting process for disposing of some assets as well. So that's another reason why we bring stuff like this to you, so.
Very good, yeah, it was just small, I didn't know if we needed to, so all good. Anything other for finance? Seeing none, President Rudy, back to you, thank you.
Okay, NOSB, no seat off.
Actually, I misspoke earlier, just a reminder to the board. Wednesday, March tenth, at six thirty is the Lake Division Virtual Meeting. It's usually a dinner meeting, but Lake Division Virtual Meeting. Zach Messer Smith, the Director of Government Relations for IASB, will be speaking on some legislative issues. But if you want to join, it's free, so you can just log in with the email that you all should have received. If you want, I'll be, I'll be there, so if you want to join me.
Okay. All right, no other seat off, so that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in, roll call, please.
Rudy.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries, thanks, good night, everybody.
All right, good night.
Thanks.